Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for July 24th, 2023. Uh, city clerk, can we do the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In just a moment.
We have two proclamations tonight. The first one is Americans with Disabilities Act Week, read by Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, because of the efforts of disability advocates and activists, the Americans with Disability Act, called the ADA, was signed into law on July 26th, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities and establish a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas 33 years after the signing of the ADA, individuals with disabilities still experience instances of discrimination, isolation, and abuse, as well as disproportionate impacts to their health, social connections, and economic stability. And whereas the city of Bellevue embraces the diversity, culture, and contributions of residents with disabilities in our schools, government, workforce, and community by diligently working with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom envisioned by the passage of the ADA, and striving to make city programs, services, and facilities accessible to all. And whereas the city's Diversity Advantage Plan, adopted in 2014, includes the guiding principles of access and inclusion, and emphasizes building an environment that values the abilities of all by proactively removing barriers and providing accommodations for full participation. And whereas the deaf and hard-of-hearing community takes pride in their rich language and culture, the passing of the ADA has allowed greater retention of this culture through qualified interpreters and evolving communication systems such as video relay services. And whereas the city of Bellevue affirms that while the ADA has significantly changed the lives of people with disabilities, we must continue to strive for equal access and opportunity. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, I do hereby proclaim the week of July 23rd through 29th, 2023, as Americans with Disability Act Week, and urge all residents of Bellevue to support disability equity and recognize the value and contributions of people with disabilities make to our city and community. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Robertson. We have tonight Ariel Bello, who is going to accept the proclamation, and you may sit down and speak to us, please. Welcome.
Yes, hello. Thank you. My name is Ariel Bello, and I'm the co-director, executive director, at the Hearing, Search, and Deaf Center. We work with the deaf community here in the city of Bellevue, as well as King County. The ADA protects the deaf community from housing discrimination, employment, transportation, and government service discrimination. It also provides a way to have ASL interpreters, like we have today. It allows us to be a part of the community as a whole. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and the city council of Bellevue for this ADA proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. We'd like to take a picture with you, so we'll meet you up right here. Our next proclamation is a Bellevue High School Performing Arts Program Week proclamation, read by Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Whereas, the arts enhance and enrich the lives of Bellevue community members through education, creative expression, and increased livability, exposing youth to the arts as a foundation for broad education and development. And whereas, the Bellevue High School Performing Arts Department's mission is to engage, celebrate, and enhance artistic understanding through the shared experience of live theater performance. And whereas Bellevue High School Performing Arts provides a safe, positive environment that encourages and fosters responsibility, discipline, teamwork, collaboration, creativity, and the production of student-created works. And whereas Bellevue High School Performing Arts students, who demonstrate a strong desire for performing arts careers, receive support and mentorship. And whereas over 30 student actors and teachers and tax in the BHS Bellevue High School Performing Arts program were awarded entry to the Edinburgh Fringe Festival in August 2023, and will perform an original musical production called "Welcome to Camp Sasquatch" on the international stage. And whereas, this honor has been bestowed to only 17 other high schools in North America, and is the program's third time attending and performing at the Fringe Festival. And whereas, youth theater programs in Bellevue are an important community resource, allowing students to express their artistic abilities and build confidence. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the city council, to hereby proclaim August 4th to 9th, 2023, as Bellevue High School Performing Arts Week in Bellevue, encouraging community members to recognize and support Bellevue High School Performing Arts and all youth theater programs for their dedication to developing and showcasing the many talented students and performers. Go Blue! Thank you.
Uh-oh. I'm sorry. We don't do clapping here, but thank you. We just wave our hands. We have Mr. Klein, the Bellevue High School Theater Director, here tonight to accept this award. We also have several students. If Mr. Klein would like to come up and speak to us, then we can have the students join us for a picture after. Okay.
Hey.
Awesome.
We'd like to thank the Bellevue City Council for this proclamation that acknowledges and honors these young theater artists. It's good to be able to live and work in a city that respects the arts, especially the arts for the youth. There are 300,000 high schools in North America, 2,300 are asked to apply. Out of that, 18 are selected. We are one of those 18. We are very proud. I'm extremely proud of these young artists. We'd like to say a few words now from our patron, our muse. So ladies and gentlemen, the man, the myth, and literally the legend, Brad.
Thank you very much, Mr. Klein.
My pleasure.
On behalf of the entire student body performing in the show, and all alumni of Bellevue High School Theater Department, I want to thank each and every one of you. We would not be able to be here or doing any of this without all of your support. Even when most people, including some of us, didn't expect this to be able to happen. When I told my family that we were going to be doing this, they said, "No, you're not. You're not going to a festival. This isn't happening. That's not something you can do." But we pushed forward. Even the Fringe Festival itself, when we applied and we said we were bringing our own musical, they said, "You don't need to bring a musical. You can just bring a play." We said, "We're bringing a musical," because that's what they asked for. And through all the challenges that have been brought up, we have pushed forward. And it is only with the support of everyone here, supporters of the arts, supporters of the children, and the city itself, that we can do what we're doing here. And we're almost there. One more week, and we're off.
Well, congratulations. It's wonderful. We'd love to have a picture with all of you. Let's do it. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, we have oral communications. City clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, we do have a number of speakers, 17 in fact. And I will remind the public and those listening online that oral communications is for a period not to exceed 30 minutes total. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak, and only three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. In addition, I need to remind everyone that in compliance with Washington State Public Disclosure Laws related to elections, that no election-related topics can be discussed during the oral communications or other public participation points on our agenda. This includes promoting or opposing ballot measures, or supporting or opposing a candidate for election, which includes your own campaign. Any speaker who begins discussing topics of this nature will be asked to stop. And given the number of speakers this evening, and the fact that 15 are signed up to speak regarding the comprehensive plan item, I'm going to turn it back to the mayor to talk a little bit about prioritizations.
So we can take three in favor of a topic, three opposed. Comprehensive plan has a lot of facets to it, so when you come to speak, please identify which area you are speaking to, so we can just have that three in that topic, and four and three against. I think that's about it. We'll see if we can get through. You don't have to speak for three minutes if you want to make it shorter. Somebody else may get a turn, but whatever, you get your three minutes. So, go ahead.
The first speaker on our list is Craig Speel.
My name is Craig Speel, and I'm a resident of Bellevue. I first would like to thank council for your leadership last week, providing direction to the Transportation Department regarding the impact of paid parking, and second, for directing the Planning Department to remove areas of opportunity from the EIS. These actions speak to how council listens to the community. Thank you very much. Tonight, though, I'm speaking on representing a coalition of neighbors and asking councils to consider to create an enhanced community engagement framework, which would maximize city engagement, trust, and transparency. Current efforts and tactics being employed are no longer adequate, reflecting the size and diversity of Bellevue. City departments have rapidly introduced initiatives which have often outpaced the councils, commissions, and the community's ability to accurately comprehend and respond to the information being presented. To help address these challenges, we are proposing a six-point plan with the goal to maximize community input. Number one, engage neighborhood associations. Contact designated neighborhood liaisons in all the neighborhoods being impacted to maximize engagement and to solicit public comment. Two, provide ample time for public comment. The comment period should correlate to the complexity of the amount of the information being presented by staff. Number three, balance oral comments between all stakeholders. Often, there are three groups vying to make oral comments: citizens, Bellevue business organizations, and external special interest groups. Controls should be established to ensure all constituents are heard. And for transparency, all speakers and organizations should be required to disclose the city where they live and work from. Four, require video recordings and establish consistent practices for all public means for key commissions and respective city departments. The practice of using audio-only recordings do not provide adequate context to the material being presented, nor are ADA compliant. Five, emphasize intuitive naming for optimal engagement. Lately, some initiative tactics have lacked intuitiveness. For example, the draft environmental impact statement for comprehensive plan periodic update for Wilberton Vision Implementation, a full name, but it failed to convey that encompassed upzoning in residential districts and neighborhood centers. The result is negatively impacted comments. And six, establish a multi-stakeholder advisory council to provide and review community engagement plans prior to city departments soliciting public input. Thank you for consideration of this proposal, and I look forward to working with the city to help implement these and other recommendations to maximize transparency, trust, and civic engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Devia Kapuria.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak today. I'm Devia Kapuria with Heartland LLC. We are real estate advisors to the ownership group of Newport Hills Shopping Center.
May I ask it? You do not hold the microphone.
Oh, is that better?
It's, yeah. We can hear you really well. Thank you.
I'm here to support the city staff's recommendation to study mixed-use, low-medium designation for all shopping centers within neighborhood centers, that is studying five to seven stories. I'm here to provide some context regarding the Newport Hills Neighborhood Center. It is the second-largest shopping center of the six identified by the city. As designated on the land use plan, the center is approximately 20 acres, of which Newport Hills Shopping Center alone is about six acres. The neighborhood center is serviced by two bus routes, 114 and 240, of which 240 operates at a frequency of 20 minutes during peak hours. The corridor along the center is also part of future frequent transit network identified in the draft EIS. Regarding the commercial viability analysis commissioned by the city, the analysis paints a picture of a retail center that generally meets the definition of a viable retail. Newport Hills Shopping Center has not been commercially viable for more than a decade, and the existing buildings are long past their usual life. The average rental rate at Newport Hills Shopping Center is three times lower than the surrounding centers, and has consistently been more than 20% vacant, whereas surrounding centers have vacancies less than 1%. The vision of Newport Hills outlined in the comprehensive plan cannot be achieved without studying higher density within neighborhood centers. I attended Newport Hills Neighborhood Walk last week, and heard that most community members enjoy walkability and ease, easy access to public amenities and services. Newport Hills Shopping Center is a unique opportunity to convert a downtrodden 1960s strip center into a true mixed-use neighborhood center. Large sites like this offer flexibility to configure buildings to incorporate public amenities such as plazas, community gathering spaces, that can have a profound impact on place-making, and can provide affordable housing that otherwise unachievable on typical sites. Potential redevelopment could also help increase the tree canopy within the site and increase pervious surfaces. A true mixed-use center also encourages walkability and reduces trips. Studying MU, low-medium in FEIS would provide flexibility to support the vision of a vibrant neighborhood, as housing drives the economics of mixed-use projects that can help fund extraordinary public amenities and retail. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is George Bullock. I think Mr. Bullock is joining us online. Mr. Bullock, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Great. My name is George Bullock, and I have lived in Bellevue for 23 years. Over the last few months, coma four has reported these stories, among others, about Seattle. A pregnant woman and her husband were shot execution-style in Belltown. The woman and her unborn child were killed. Her husband was injured. She was a beloved Belltown business owner. Last Friday, a homeless encampment exploded and burned outside Harborview Medical Center. The encampment is already being rebuilt in the exact same spot. The Seattle City Council voted against following Washington State law that makes it illegal to use drugs in public. All drug use is now effectively legal in the city of Seattle. A homeless encampment sits next to the Arrowhead Gardens senior home in South Park. It has been there for months. Interviews with the residents are heartbreaking as they tell of crime, theft, noise, gunshots, and more. Last weekend, there was a Mariners game, two Taylor Swift concerts, and the Capitol Hill Block Party. Early Sunday morning, a crowd of people basically took over central Capitol Hill. Illegal racing ensued. Police moved in but pulled back after they met resistance. Two hours later, four people were shot. Meanwhile, Seattle looks terrible. Graffiti is pervasive, and yet in June, a federal judge limited the Seattle Police Department from making arrests for certain cases on free speech grounds. No self-respecting city would allow itself to descend into drug use, crime, chaos, and ugliness like this. The lack of respect is coming from the city council and counties and state officials, who have passed laws that have resulted in dangerous reduction, and law enforcement personnel have legalized public drug use and have tied officials' hands regarding shutting down homeless encampments. The disrespected are the citizens who pay these people salaries. Do not let this happen in Bellevue. We are watching, and we will not accept these conditions in our beautiful, safe, and wonderful community. We vote you in, we pay your salaries, and we expect you to do whatever it takes to not let our city become the next Seattle. Thank you.
The next speaker on the list is Heidi Dean.
Oh, my clock already started before I sat down. So, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It's always a pleasure to follow up for the reps with Heartland, or with the Newport Hills Shopping Center, to see what kind of crazy stories they're going to tell you about the shopping center. You know, it kind of blows what I had to say here, but let me just remind all of you that if it's a downtrodden shopping center, it's because your client allowed it to become that way. Over the last 10 years, his father took care of it when he had it in his possession. Let me remind you, too, that both North Town and Bell East are older than our shopping center and were maintained. East Gate Plaza and the Kelsey Creek Center are only six and nine years newer than ours, both maintained. So anything that happens at Newport Hills is because of her client and his decision-making. We do have a buyer. We have a buyer that I think would make everybody happy, you happy, me happy, my neighborhood. But we can't get him to come back to the table with this buyer. It would fulfill a lot of the stuff on the comp plan, in terms of housing for seniors, in terms of maintaining our small businesses, but when you have somebody who just wants to profit off of you, it's kind of hard. So, you know, if you don't see a whole lot of us here from the neighborhoods tonight, it's because people don't know that this is happening. These letters came in from property owners such as Rainier Northwest, asking for what is essentially site-specific rezones. That, we don't do that during the comp plan update. We don't do that during the DEIS, but that's what everybody seems to be asking for. So, I really, this whole business about, let's, let's make a compromise with mixed-use, low, medium. No. You know what? I don't want to be in Thunderdome with Kelsey Creek Center, who actually is the appropriate size for the mixed-use mid-rise. I want to see them win. I don't want to see North Town, Newport Hills, Lakemont, Bell East. I don't want to see us have to lose so that Kelsey Creek can win. It doesn't have to be that way. I would really like for you to honor the mixed-use low-rise designations. And you know what? Go around and look at some of those shopping centers. North Town hasn't had a vacancy in almost seven or eight years since Silver Platters moved in. They don't need all of this density to survive, but we need a new owner, and we need our allowed uses updated. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Jody Alberts.
Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House, and councilmembers. For the record, I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the Bellevue Chamber regarding the preferred alternative in the comp plan, FEIS, in support. While the chamber is in favor of the council's work on the comp plan on the whole, we'd like to voice particular appreciation for the areas that council aligned with Alternative Three. It's crucial that we study the maximum density as described in Alternative Three, so that the cumulative impacts from the chosen alternative can be fully studied in the final decision as required by SEPA. Given the importance of Wilberton to our city's economic viability and general livability, we should maximize its potential for both businesses and residents, and understand the effects of such growth. Wilberton's proximity to light rail, significance to small businesses, which call it home, and ability to produce affordable housing make it an ideal candidate for maximum growth potential. Accordingly, we caution against over-administering land use designations in lower densities in this area specifically. We've heard from several property owners and businesses that had concern over what lower heights and alternate uses would mean for the future of this area. The business community that Bellevue has cultivated is a very strong one, and it makes Bellevue Bellevue. And we would like to continue to ensure that economic opportunity and entrepreneurial spirit continues to flourish in this area. Thank you for your dedication to this work, and the opportunity to comment, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with the city, staff, and council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Joe Coolidge.
My name is Joe Coolidge. I have lived here most of my life, and in downtown Bellevue for the past five years. I want to tell you about two major concerns of the current 20-year comprehensive plan, and what's happening to downtown Bellevue. I appreciate that the city is putting a lot of effort into the 20-year plan, a lot of data and reports are being generated. However, some important basic realities are in danger of being overlooked. Many of my downtown neighbors share these concerns, which I have entered into the public comment record, but I want you, our leaders, to hear directly from a very concerned citizen. The first problem is downtown office space is being overbuilt. Rampant high-rise construction downtown has created a growing surplus of office space. For example, the West Main Project, three new high-rise buildings with 1 million square feet, sit unfinished and empty. Amazon, the principal tenant, is still considering how to use the space. Also, Microsoft is not renewing their leases for over 1 million square feet of downtown office space. Several other companies have announced intent to sublease their office space. Working from home is here for good, and this will continue to soften the demand for offices, especially tech work, which comprises many of our downtown jobs. All four working adults in my family, two software engineers, a writer, and an attorney, work remotely and have no need or desire to be in an office building. We've all seen what's happened in San Francisco, Portland, and Seattle: vacant buildings, increased crime, businesses and people leaving, and a general deterioration of the downtown area. Excess office space is a major factor. Please don't let this happen to our beautiful city. Please pause the runaway high-rise office construction. The second major problem is downtown vehicle traffic is destined for more gridlock. I see the traffic on Northeast Bellevue Way and other downtown arterial slow to a crawl and get very backed up several times a day. There is no way these roads can absorb the additional traffic from all the downtown construction. There is also a pedestrian safety issue. My wife and I love the walkability of downtown, and we have seen several incidents of near-misses with vehicles that ignore traffic signals endangering pedestrians lawfully using the crosswalks. The draft EIS has identified traffic as a significant and unavoidable impact. It's not enough to just say this. Something has to be done. That something is simply pause all new major downtown office projects until the traffic situation can be solved. To summarize, downtown Bellevue is suffering from rampant high-rise construction, which is certain to result in too many empty offices and more gridlock traffic. The only viable remedy is to pause all new major downtown projects. Thank you for listening. My hope is that this will spark a realization among you and others that we need to tap the brakes on downtown growth until these critical issues are solved.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anne Coughlin.
Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager. I would like to open with a quote, thanks to Pam Johnson. "The people of the state of Washington do not yield their sobrenity to the agencies which serve them. On July 10th, the Transportation Department, without a single member who was elected among them, asked city council to form a separate government and impose a 0.1% tax, sales tax on people of Bellevue. They only informed, apparently, the downtown community. Further, they presented no budgets, projects, and timelines. On the following Monday, the city council voted 5 to 1," thank you, Mr. Lee, "to allow them to incorporate and form a separate government with funding to be decided in the future. This is the most, only the most recent insulting overreach by staff. It does not seem that the people are heard. I have more to say. Other people have said this. I have been a resident of Northeast Bellevue for 28 years. I have been through three Northeast Bellevue comp plans as a very active member of the Northeast Bellevue group. The earlier iterations in 2017, 18, 19 were open to discussion, were held in public, and it seemed that only..." and it seemed that only residents attended. As the meetings became virtual in mid-2020, they progressively came more skewed towards the Planning Commission's desired outcome and not the public's, the tax-paying public of Bellevue. On this, the fourth iteration affecting Northeast Bellevue, the development of BTC into a mixed-use on steroids. They have already been rejected three times for directing that, developing that property by PUD, which has been in place for a very long time. Here now, they want to upzone. Mixed-use medium would allow 7 to 10-story structures, and I don't know what far they would allow with that. There are only two main roads in and out of Northeast Bellevue, north up and northeast 24th. Those roads earned a D by the transportation community. The Bellevue Tech Center spans that stretch and goes three to four blocks back. Plus, city staff has affirmed that it will not result in affordable housing. The Planning Commission has been acting largely, oops, I'm almost done. So, I think I've said it. Thank you for your time. I hope you listen to the few residents. This place used to be full. You used to have to open the other garage. I hope those days return. This train's running.
Please feel free to-
The next speaker on the list is-
Oh, sorry. Please feel free to email your full comments if you haven't already.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker on the list is Christina DeGonie.
Good evening. My two cousins and my cousin's son have also joined me since Lisa's probably a speaker tonight and we thought we could just wrap this into one. So, thank you again to the council members, staff, and you, the mayor, for taking the time to hear us tonight. My name is Christina DeGonie and I am one of the owners of Overlake Farm, a 60-acre farm in the northeast corner of Bellevue. It's been there since 1942. Tonight, I'm here with my cousins Lisa and Linda Safara, Linda's son Forrest, who's our fourth generation, and our two 80-plus-year-old mothers and aunt are with us tonight for support. These two women have spent a lifetime on the farm when Bellevue Square was Strawberry Fields and they'd ride their ponies down to Bellevue Square and go to the old Little Nordstroms and Mary Grove Go-Round and Frederick and Nelson's, et cetera. The city is at a precipice of growth and in that Overlake Farm is the single largest landholding left in Bellevue. We think we can help in the process, but also keep our farm a farm and keep open space. Specifically, I, we are here again this week to ask that the City Council direct staff to include our medium on our parcels in the preferred alternative map going forward. As mentioned before, this is a legacy property that has been handed down through the generations for 81 years. We have been good stewards, but the time has come to do something with at least a small portion of our property. To address neighbor concerns, in part, we are fortunate that we are surrounded by buffer transition zones that consist of medium-density 6001, condo apartments to the north, Bellevue Municipal Golf Course to the east, and our own 20 acres to the west, which I might add, we are not asking for consideration on. Specifically, we are looking to cluster a project consisting of townhomes, cottages, and/or apartments in our northeast corner of the 140th and next to 6001, which consists of something around 5 to 8 acres. We can only do this if we build taller under our medium. Otherwise, we will have sprawl over our entire property, which means cutting down trees and grading out our beautiful topography. That is not our goal. We continue to cherish pasture, horses, open space, and don't want to develop our full acreage for the foreseeable future that is being discussed today. We believe within our own property, we can also provide natural buffer zones via wetlands and topography due to the sheer size. We have heard from our neighbors and concerns about transition and we have those same concerns, but we need our medium on our parcels so we can congregate density. As such, we believe it's appropriate for our three parcels to be designated going forward in the preferred alternative plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Chuck Doland.
Mayor, council, staff, thank you for allowing me to come chat with you a little bit. I'm a long-term resident of the West Bellevue area, also known as Lockleven. We are concerned that city staff appears to be moving to increase the density, to designate us as an urban residential rather than suburban and that that would permit higher rises, greater densities, and reduce the livability of our neighborhood. We understand that HB 1110, the state, is impacting your ability to zone. There is an apparent related bill, 1337, that seeks to further decrease your ability to plan, manage, and control. As I read 1337, you have to opt in. You have the ability to opt into that. The carrot there is they'll transfer some state sales tax revenues to the city in exchange for you giving up the ability to plan. So, I would suggest that you take a real hard look at that. We know that we have a need for increasing density, increasing livability. Prices are sort of out of state. We're fortunate that we moved into that neighborhood in 1978 and have seen it grow and expand. We've been part of the planning within the city, sub-area plans, as well as working on the downtown park. So, I have a vested interest in that and I hope that you will not just be overridden in the Wilburton mega-plan that seems to take away what our subareas previously managed. So, thank you very much and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have time for one additional speaker and that person is Johnny Liu.
This is on? Okay, cool. Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and city council members, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I wanted to speak specifically in support of the mixed-use low designation specifically for neighborhood centers. And I want to speak about it from an infrastructure perspective, but also a kind of greenhouse gas emissions perspective. I'm going to have a lens of Newport Hills just because that's where I live, so I'm going to talk about that. So, Newport Hills has one single collector road. And if you go through the DEIS and you look for the kind of infrastructure improvements that are anticipated for the next 10 years, there's only three. There's a stoplight coming in. There is a, I think, there's a sidewalk being built and then there's potentially a roundabout being built for, but that's dependent on outside agency funding. So, there's not a lot of throughput capacity that we're adding to the neighborhood center, at least specifically for Newport Hills. So, that's kind of like one part of it. The next part is from an emissions standpoint. So, looking through the DEIS, at the very end, it's in a small appendix at the very end, but looking at the difference in mode share for transportation between the no-action alternative and Alternative III, you actually see a 3% increase in single occupancy vehicles between those two alternatives, which you kind of would expect otherwise, but you do see seemingly an overall increase in single occupancy vehicles. So, you kind of merge the two together. You have kind of relatively limited infrastructure improvements coming in. You have an expected increase in the single occupancy vehicle usage. And you kind of put that into a neighborhood center and you can probably expect a lot more stop-and-go traffic, a lot more kind of, you know, waiting for, you know, the stoplight to change. And from an emissions standpoint, that's like the worst thing that you could really do. So, I want to just bring your attention to kind of the concerns of the lack of infrastructure improvements along with the kind of proposed potential upzoning of it. So, you know, I think mixed-use low makes sense. I understand the need for growth and affordability, like that needs to happen in Bellevue. But I do think that, you know, we have an ability to customize some of these plans with sub-area planning as well and that maybe we should consider that as a way to kind of consider the right types of zoning for these neighborhood centers. So, that's my whole spiel. Thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And that does bring us to the 30-minute mark. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. So, anybody who did not have a chance to speak, I hope that you will email all of us so that we can read your comments. And I'm afraid that we're going to have to stop the public comment here and continue with the rest of our meeting. If I can find my notes.
They never give people speed.
Mr. Zimmerman? Mr. Zimmerman, could you escort him out, please? Officer, could you escort Mr. Zimmerman out, please? Thank you. Okay. Mr. Zimmerman, it's time for you to go. Mr. Zimmerman? Okay, I don't know how to speed you up. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the report of the City Manager. And I know that this is written information only. It's in our packet. Would you like to describe what it is?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This is a report of an emergency procurement. This is information, this is information that per the Bellevue City Code, the manager is required to inform the City Council of any emergency procurement that was executed. And in this case, an emergency procurement was necessary because of unanticipated contamination that was discovered during demolition of the Fire Station 10 site. And as a result, emergency contracting was required for immediate remediation. So, that, it is in your packet. There's additional details in the packet, on the report as well.
Terrific. Thank you very much. So, Councilmember Stokes, you have an appointment to the Arts Commission.
Yes, I do, Mayor. And I'm very pleased to make a recommendation for Richard Niederlander. He's originally from New York City. His family grew up there and involved in arts and museums and such for a long time. He has a lot of experience in that and is very active now. He's been in Bellevue for a couple of years and he's an engineer with Blue Origin. And he's really, brings another perspective to the commission and I'm very pleased to offer him for appointment to a full four-year term to the commission.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Richard Niederlander to the Bellevue Arts Commission for full term.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Welcome to Richard Niederlander. Consent calendar, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We have three study session items, two of which we will be discussing. One is just in the packet. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce the first one?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The first item in, on your study session agenda this evening is a, the planning is a continuation of last week's discussion regarding the Planning Commission's preferred alternative as it relates to the comprehensive plan update and the Wilburton Vision implementation. Tonight, again, staff is seeking, if council is ready, council direction on the alternative to be further studied in the final environmental impact statement. Joining us this evening are at the table Michael Coderman, who is the director, Emile King, Planning Director, Tara Johnson, Comprehensive Planning Manager, and Janet Shaw, Strategic Planning Manager, all from the Committee Development Department. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Mike.
Mr. Miyake, excuse me, just for a sec. I want to direct the council's attention to Naps on your, at your seat here. And the PowerPoint presentation is also printed out for your reference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Mr. Miyake, for the introduction. Tonight, we are, first of all, I want to start out by saying thank you to all of you for last week's meeting. We covered a lot of ground. We got some really good direction from the City Council last week. So, tonight, we want to affirm, to make sure we heard correctly, what you told us last week. We're looking for clarification on a couple of other items and we're looking for some direction on the new items that are in your packet regarding the site-specific requests. And then, as Mr. Miyake mentioned, if you're ready this evening, we'd like the overall direction to move this forward for additional study. I know there's been a lot of consternation on the part of the public and others about what an EIS is and is not and what we're actually asking of the council. We've gotten locked into this term preferred alternative and in retrospect, I wish we hadn't used that one. So, I'm going to try an analogy tonight to explain exactly what this is all about. So, if you will indulge me this, I'm going to borrow a page from my friend, Jenicey Atkins, who always uses food analogies to explain things. A few years ago, I don't know if you remember, I tried using bread and peanut butter as an analogy for something and that seemed to help. So, I'm not using bread and peanut butter tonight, but I am going to use, excuse me, cooking. So, if, when I'm, when I'm cooking, I often look on the website for recipes because I usually don't know what I'm doing to begin with. So, I want to see a variety of recipes. And I'll start with something that's basic that I can, that I can use. It has basic ingredients in it. It's starting from something that I know. In the case of the draft EIS, that would be our no-action alternative. That's the comprehensive plan. That's our existing plan. We know that. That has all of the basic ingredients that we need. Then, over time, I will try different recipes with different ingredients. I'll mix and match different meats, different pastas, different ingredients, spices, and things that might go into that to try those different tastes and see what works, what doesn't for me or people that I have for dinner. What we've done with the comprehensive plan, and Wilburton is a part of that dish, if I can continue that analogy, is we have, we have tested different mixtures of ingredients. So, we have Alternatives 1, 2, and 3, which start with the basics that we have in the existing plan. And then, we've added different things to see how those work together and what the different impacts would be. What we're asking for at this stage is, we have a couple of those that we have looked at and the Planning Commission has said, well, we kind of like both of these, but we want to try something a little bit different. We have all the ingredients we've already tried. We're not going to add any additional ingredients, but we're going to test different mixtures than what we've tested already. That's what this alternative is. It's really just looking at a mixture of a different combination of those ingredients. And it's not saying that this is the only way we're ever going to fix this dish. It's just saying, this is what we want to try now and we want to test it a little bit more. So, we're asking for additional study on some variations on what we've already studied in the draft EIS.
So, bring it back around. We've already studied-
We've already studied Alternatives 0, which is our existing comprehensive plan. We've already studied Alternatives 1, 2, and 3 for the entire city as well as for Wilburton specifically. And because we're doing Wilburton at the same time as the rest of the city's update for the comprehensive plan, we've done a little bit more work on that in particular.
And so, now, the thing that's different is a hybrid of 2 and 3?
Correct.
Which is what we are contemplating, asking you-
Some ingredients from 3, we're mixing them together. We want to see what that tastes like compared to 2 and 3.
And we're contemplating asking you to study that. We're not making a decision on what we do with those plans. We just want to look at the impacts-
That's correct.
-of what the hybrid might have.
Correct. Everything stays on the menu at this point.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
The only other thing I would add is, as we're looking at at the different items that we're talking to you about this evening and going forward through this process, is that we keep in mind that we're not talking, we're not planning for the Bellevue of today. We're planning for the Bellevue of 5, 10, 20 years into the future as we add 35,000 more housing units and 70,000 more jobs over that time period. So, with that, I will turn it over to Emile to kick us off and talk more about planning instead of food.
Thanks, Michael. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Staff are here tonight to continue the discussion that we started on July 17th where we reviewed the- the planning commission's recommended preferred alternative. We took that feedback that we received last week, we addressed it in the memo in your packet tonight, and we're going to be reviewing that feedback and then methodically going through each area to see if the council is ready to give direction on those specific elements. We do also have August 7 reserved as a backup date if the council would like additional time to talk about things. The agenda is going to be a very brief recap of the schedule tonight, and then we will be going through the feedback we received, both on the planning commission's preferred alternative, as well as the areas that the council would like to have some more analysis done in the final environmental impact statement.
Oh, thank you.
We're going to use this, this numbering system in order for the discussion tonight and the presentation. So we'll be starting with Wilberton, describing the feedback we received, we'll move on to mixed-use centers, which include downtown, East Main, Crossroads, Factoria, East Gate areas. And then we'll move on to neighborhood centers, which we've had some public comment about, but those are the six neighborhood shopping centers, areas of opportunity, neighborhood residential, affordable housing, tree canopy. The site specifics are something we have in your packet as well, we'll review those with you based on your direction. So we included a, a map and listing in your packet and your council packet tonight, and there were some other requests as well. Just a quick refresher on the, the schedule, we're, we're past the halfway point of this effort. These, these efforts were launched back in early 2022. You can see that Wilberton and the comp plan update are continuing to, to move forward. We have the environmental impact statement, which is really the technical document that looks at the benefits of different growth options, as well as some of the impacts and potential mitigation measures. So we, we have the DEIS that we completed, and now we're in the process of forming another alternative to go look at some more in the final EIS. There are a number of future actions and discussions, both at the board and commission level, as well as, as well as the council level. So you can see the council interactions would first happen on Wilberton, and then follow up with the citywide effort on the comp plan. And then a very brief refresher on the process framework for the alternatives, it's important to note that, as Michael described, the no-action alternative and the three action alternatives have already been analyzed in the draft EIS. So those were formed earlier this year, analyzed, we had the 45-day comment period. Now we're at the, the point where we are looking at this preferred alternative to go do some additional analysis on. There is still significant work after the FEIS to sort out exactly what the growth strategy is, and that happens at the board and commission level, involves the community, and then ultimately it does come back for a council decision on that. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to our staff team, and we're going to go through the different topics. And Mayor, based on your direction, I think we were going to go through all nine of them, and then we would come back and talk about them with council, is that correct?
Great, thank you. So starting with Wilberton, we heard last week that the council preference was to, or the feedback we heard, was to study the planning commission preferred alternative, which is the hybrid of alternatives two and three for Wilberton. And then in addition, we also heard that it would be important in the FEIS analysis to evaluate impacts on neighborhoods to the east of the study area, as well as assess the impact of higher densities around Lake Bellevue, including public access.
So we're going to switch to, sorry, can you hear me okay? Okay. Now, we're going to switch to the other topics that are related to our citywide analysis. So start off with mixed-use centers. And as Emile mentioned, right at the, right at the start of the presentation, those relate to our commercial centers, commercial mixed-use centers, so areas like Crossroads, Factoria, East Gate, Downtown, and Bell Red are some of our mixed-use centers. At last week's council meeting, we heard from city council that you were supportive of the planning commission's preferred alternative, and some additional analysis that you wanted incorporated into the final EIS relates to just what the overall transportation impacts are going to be, cumulative impacts as a result of the final EIS, and then the associated The next topic is neighborhood centers, and we heard a fair amount in terms of public comment this evening, as well as public comment that's been transmitted to city council through correspondence. We also had a fair amount of deliberation and discussion with both the planning commission relating to what's appropriate for these neighborhood centers. So we have six neighborhood centers, shopping centers, they vary in size, we had economic analysis that supported a lot of that discussion and analysis. And similar to council's discussion at last week's meeting, planning commission also spent a great deal of time deliberating over what's appropriate, the preferred alternative, of course, and the planning commission's recommendation was for a mixed-use low, but they also were really open to some other options like, very similar to what council discussed, in terms of looking at something in between mixed-use low and mixed-use medium, which would be in the five to seven-story range. So something that we're looking for direction from council tonight as part of your overall discussion is, what should be included in the final EIS? Should we be evaluating all neighborhood centers similarly, or should we be looking at certain neighborhood centers with certain criteria differently from others? The next topic area relate to areas of opportunity. So just to start off, these are defined as areas that are well-served by transit, they're areas located outside both the mixed-use centers and the neighborhood centers. Again, a great deal of discussion at both the planning commission, as well as city council. And then the feedback that we heard from you last week clearly was to really not, and we heard a lot from the community as well, concern about additional density surrounding or within these, these areas of opportunity. So what we heard from you last week was to not include the higher-density designation for both multifamily, as well as some of the single-family areas, but to really focus on the additional density required under state legislation, under House Bill 1110 and 1337. So what we heard from you was, within the FEIS, we should be studying the impact of, of those two bills and not looking at higher-density designations within the areas of opportunity. Now moving, moving along to neighborhood residential. Here, what we heard from council, and we also heard public testimony today about the Overlake Farms property, but there was support based on last week's council discussion to support the planning commission's preferred alternative relating to neighborhood residential. There was also discussion at last week's council meeting relating to additional analysis being needed for the new legislation that had been passed. We have incorporated aspects of 1110, but of course, as we talked about last week, the provisions of the bill weren't complete at that time, so the FEIS would include studying the impacts of 1110 and 1337. We also heard from council desire to really look at the Overlake Farms property and really incorporate the entire 40 acres for, for additional and further study within the FEIS at a higher density than the preferred alternative or the planning commission's recommendation was for. We also had a discussion with council about looking at the residential large lot designation within the preferred alternative, and whether that should be designated with a slightly higher-density designation, the residential suburban citywide. So those are things for further discussion with the council this evening. The next topic area relates to affordable housing, and here the planning commission's recommendation was to study both mandatory and voluntary approaches to affordable housing citywide. The council was supportive of the planning commission's recommendation. And also, in addition, there was, there was robust discussion at council last week relating to studying some additional pieces within the FEIS in addition to the planning commission's recommendation. So studying the impact of other affordable housing tools and incentives, including MFTE within high-rise, how that would be impacted, the impact of rental and ownership as well, as well as the impact of mandatory affordable housing on the cost of developing market-rate The next topic area relates to tree canopy. This was, this was a piece that we heard a lot from the community through the draft EIS comment period, and the intent was to have that studied in more detail in the final EIS. Council had, had again, a robust discussion along, around the, the topics of what our established ESI goal is for tree canopy, the significance of maintaining or exceeding our existing tree canopy, and heard pretty specifically from council that we should be studying the impact of the preferred alternative on tree canopy and the additional density and capacity we're looking at.
The next area is what we're calling site-specific requests, and these are specific to requests that were made during the draft EIS comment period, and they were not analyzed in the draft EIS, nor are recommended in the preferred alternative. So we wanted to, to make council aware of these. The important part is if, if any of these were wanting to be considered at a future time, it is going to be better to look at them in this environmental review process or supplemental analysis would be needed at a future time for these. So we've given you a blown-up map of this, we're happy to go into details on any of them when we get to that point, but these are more for information for the council. And then on the list of other things that came up at the last meeting, in your memo, we have a write-up on the, the traffic analysis questions that Councilmember Robertson brought up. We also have a reprint of the summary of the alternatives, impacts, and mitigation from the DEIS in the packet. We, we included a tree canopy map from the July 2022 tree canopy assessment, the data for that is from the year 2019, and it is 39% tree canopy coverage overall for the city, and then the map actually shows the differences by different subarea in the city. So you can see it varies from as low as 9% in downtown, and 14% in Bell Red, up to above 50% in areas like Bridle Trails, Cougar Mountain, Lake Mont, and Westlake, Samamish is 48%. There will be new data coming out on the tree canopy in the next couple of months, so we're getting new data that we'll be able to report back to the boards and commissions and council when we get new information. In a minute, I'll talk a bit about the building types under House Bill 1110, that was a request made by council. And then we also have on here the desire to evaluate how the different alternatives, including the preferred alternative, are going to align with our overall values that we're using. And reminder, those are housing and affordable housing, sustainability, and then equity and Want to just briefly cover the, the missing middle building types as defined by House Bill 1110. The bill actually lays out nine different building types that, that are defined as missing middle or middle housing. Those include duplex, triplex, fourplex, fiveplex, sixplex. We've shown some of those examples of the, the pluses on this page. And on the following page, we have examples of cottage housing, which is generally smaller housing arranged around a community open space, needs to be no less than 20% of the overall site. We also have townhouses that are shown here, we do have townhouses in the city right now. And then the last two are courtyard apartments and stacked flats, which are essentially our apartments or condos that are single-level living is the main definition of the stacked flat building type. So with that, Mayor, I wanted to turn it back over to you, and we, we have the same numbering system and arrangement of topics, and we're happy to, to follow your lead on, on going through these and getting some direction from council.
All right, thank you. Great presentation. I'm going to first just ask for general questions about the process, and then we'll take each one of these nine at it, one at a time, and I will just ask you to raise your hand if you have a comment or question about these. So just speaking general, generally, Deputy Mayor, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks again for coming back, and great presentation, and thank you so much for taking great notes for the last meeting and, and hearing the council's initial feedback on this. Got a number of questions, I'll try and keep them somewhat general at this point, but some might, might dive into some of these specific topic areas. But first question is, what is the advantage and the disadvantage to studying more than what we might allow when this comes back before us? This, right, this is the EIS, but, you know, we're not beholden to follow through on what the EIS may support or not support, or, or go forward with more density or less density. So if you could, and, and part of this is, I want residents to hear this, and I want to make sure that we're all clear on this as well, about what the advantages and disadvantages are of looking at that from a, from a, from a, from a maximum perspective, which in this case, the alternative three. So that's my, my, my first question. Also, on the, on the FEIS, will it show the impact? I know we've got the tree canopy in here, but I'm also concerned about the, the loss of green spaces, so I want to make sure that that's covered as well. I mean, I'm not quite sure if we would combine those or not, but to me, green space is a little bit different than, than the tree canopy, so that's something I'm very much interested in. Also, really want to understand what the timeline for growth will be included in the FEIS. I'm sure that will be part of that final report, but I want to make sure that we've got a really firm understanding of that, as well as that we separate the growth that we can manage or control and the growth that we can't. Thanks to our friends in, in Olympia, there are certain things that we can control, which, you know, I'm more concerned about than the things that we can. So I really, I really want to understand that. And then also, I really want to understand what the upgrades to utilities, and I believe this is going to be part of it, but I'd love you to speak to it tonight, will need in order to, you know, throughout the city, and what the costs will be associated with the upgrade to utilities that we would need to do in order to support that increased density throughout the city, not just neighborhood, neighborhood centers, but, you know, throughout the city. And then last question, and then I'll allow you to answer, is the, the mandatory versus the incentive systems for affordable housing. So I'd like to...
Can you hold that for when we get to number six?
I will, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and take a first crack at a couple of these, and then ask staff to, to fill in the rest of it. Regarding your first question, Deputy Mayor, the advantages and disadvantages of studying more, this is part of what's called for in, in SEPA, in the state law. So we want to look at the range of possibilities so we can understand what the, what the maximum impacts might be under different scenarios. We do make a choice about how much of that, how far we want to go with that in terms of analysis, but we want to make sure that we've, we've analyzed enough to know that we're not going to go beyond that in the future, with the understanding that we're probably going to come where, somewhere, come in somewhere less than that. So if, if that helps to explain that aspect of it?
It does, thank you.
Okay. In terms of the impact on loss of green space, could you say a little bit more about what, what you're defining as green space?
Green space that might not have, I mean, like, like, like Larson, for example, you've got a lot of green space, open space there of, you know, grass fields and blueberry patches there, et cetera. But, you know, the trees are, you know, you know, dispersed throughout that area, but it's not just trees, it's a lot of just great, you know, wonderful green space to enjoy as well. Does that make sense?
Yes. No, that, that helps, because I didn't know if you meant the formal green belts that we have designated, or if it went beyond that. So it sounds like it's a little bit of a mixture of...
Yes.
...of all of those. Certainly in terms of the formal spaces or the, the official spaces we've designated for green space, we would measure any impacts on those. The broader definition of green space, I think, would get picked up to a certain extent through the tree canopy analysis.
Okay.
We don't, at, at this level of analysis... We don't, at, at this level of analysis through an environmental impact statement, when we're looking at a plan, a 20-year plan like this, it usually doesn't get down to the site-specific basis. So it would look at it in more general terms, and if we're looking at development, then it would say, this type of development may lead to more loss of green space, but it won't necessarily quantify it, if, if that's helpful at all.
It will not quantify the amount of green space that potentially could be lost.
Not necessarily. It would be, it'd be more of a comparative, that this would have a greater, this alternative would have a greater potential loss of green space than this other alternative, for example.
Okay. Helpful. Thank you.
Regarding the timeline for growth, that is definitely something that came up in the DEIS comments, and is something that we'll be having in the final EIS.
Okay.
We do look out 20 years when we're doing our forecasts, and they definitely have year-by-year interim forecasts that we do. And we're comfortable doing those. We've done them in, in the, in the years past. Some of the things that we do take into account are definitely the office growth right now, and kind of, we're in a bit of a holding pattern. Development is still happening, but the office development does happen in cycles. So we do make some estimates about the office growth and how it might be relating to growth cycles. It's interesting, the housing used to follow big growth cycles too, but over the past 10 years or so, it's kind of had a, a huge demand and has continued on even in the office down cycles. So we're going to be looking at the amount of housing that we might be getting, and clearly having some yearly estimate so we can report back to the council on how we're doing on our forecasts. And if we're not making what we need to do on a yearly basis, we can address that. Or if we're growing too fast, there's definitely things that the council can, can consider to get more on track with what we want our forecasts to be.
Okay. Okay.
I would just add that we're also required under state law to do a check in five years, just to see how we're, how we're tracking in terms of our plan. And then we do an update every 10 years now. That's also required under state law. So even though this is a 20-year plan, it's also a dynamic plan, and we're, we're always checking in. Because Emile said, there, there are cycles in development and, and growth, and we always want to, it sort of evens out over the 20 years, but we also want to see where we are at each of those increments in the 20-year process, and we can adjust at those times.
Great.
Then the last one about utilities. So there, there's a capital facilities chapter of the draft EIS, and it covers a whole host of different infrastructure that we need, from police, fire, utilities. This is the 20-year plan for growth, so what we need to do is, as the plan is being formulated, we are working with the other departments in the city as an awareness of the order of magnitude growth that might be coming. And then it manifests in usually the shorter-term functional plans that they develop. So if you remember, groups like transportation or utilities or police, they have shorter-term plans with their needs of both staffing and infrastructure. So utilities is a good example, that we're working with them on knowing the order of magnitude that we're planning for, and then they do need to, to get the functional plans that get to the exact infrastructure and the dollars that you're talking about to actually build those.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other general questions or comments council members on?
Yes, thank you. I just want to confirm, I believe that you did say that in the presentation, but in the direction, it says, continued council discussion and direction on FEIS preferred alternative, but I know when you were talking about cooking, what I heard you say is that we are still trying to provide all the different ingredients that we might want to put into the cooking. So even though it says preferred alternative, we're not actually picking a preferred alternative right now. Right? I just want to make sure we're really hear that one more time.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that question. Yeah, I do want to emphasize that. We, we've kept the term preferred alternative because that's how we've, that's what we've used, and that's the planning commission's recommendation for preferred alternative. So we're just trying to be consistent in terms of that reference, but we're not asking the council to select a preferred alternative or decide on a preferred alternative.
Okay. And then my second question is, on page five, it has the process timeline, and I know we start in January of 2022. We did get some questions that came in in email, asking questions about the planning data of how we came up with the, the different information that goes into the FEIS. And I think it would be helpful for those that may not have seen that information that really came from the Vision 2050 and the Regional Growth Management Board. It seems like there's some information there that perhaps the community did not see or completely understand, so I think it might be helpful to include that as part of the, the next week's information, just so that it, it's tied into the process piece. And, and then maybe it's going to get talked about as part of number nine. But I'm also wondering about, just making sure that as we are confirming the FEIS, what exactly will be studied as part of the analysis? Because when we look at the summary of the DEIS alternatives, impacts and mitigation, a number of the options say same as this one, same as this one. But that's only because we haven't actually done the more deeper analysis. Is that correct? So when we get to the additional analysis, there will be enough information for us to have a comparative analysis of all these different options. I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
No, I appreciate the question. A lot of what's in the, in the draft EIS, excuse me, is more of a qualitative analysis, as I was explaining earlier in the green space. So it's, it's comparing the different ones in terms of the overall general impact. It doesn't necessarily quantify each of those. For some it does, but not for all of them. And there's a whole list of items that are, were included in the draft EIS that was used to analyze each of those other four alternatives, the no-action and the three alternatives. So the preferred alternative will get the analysis, the same analysis that those four did in those same areas. So there were things like land use in urban form, relationship to other plans, population and employment, housing, air quality, noise, transportation, public facilities. So the, the preferred alternative will be analyzed for each of those things as well. So at the same level as the other four. Is there anything you want to add to that, Emile? Does that help to clarify some of what we're, what the FEIS will include?
Yes. Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Lee, followed by councilmember Robertson, then to use an analogy, we're going to get the plane off the runway and start talking about the specifics. All right. Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I want to follow up. Mike, you mentioned the comparison analogy of compared to cooking. I, I think that this is a lot more difficult and challenging and to understand as a cooking is. So, but it's, it's a good analogy. You, you talk about, you know, alternatives, one, two, three, and a hybrid. I believe that, you know, it's a kind of general and confusing to mostly to the public as well, very confusing. I believe words are important. When you say alternative, when people think about it, it's like it's a, the proposal we're looking at. It's what we've chosen. We haven't chosen yet, basically what you just said. So I think it's important to make sure it's clear, so people don't have the impression of, well, it's the alternative. So make sure it's clear. And when you talk about tree canopy, I appreciate you're having a map, you know, to identify the tree canopies. One word I hear in your, in your description, in your PowerPoint, is a statement made, tree canopy is foundational to the identity of Bellevue. I want to be sure whether you mean by foundational to the identity of Bellevue.
I'll start on that one, and I'll ask others to, to chime in as well. I think what was, what was intended from that statement is, some of what we heard from the council, and we've also heard from the public, is how important tree canopy is to Bellevue. Certainly from an environmental standpoint, but also just from an identity standpoint, because Bellevue is, is seen as a city and a park. So I think that's what, what that was capturing.
Right.
Anyone want to add to that?
Yeah, I think it's, it's based a lot on the, the community input. When we ask people to talk about what they valued or identified as their neighborhood, a lot of times the tree canopy was brought up as a key issue.
Right. But again, this is a big term. Bellevue is a city and a park. We all agree. You know, but when you say foundational, I don't, I don't mean, I don't understand what it is. Do you mean that everybody has to hold on to a tree as foundational? So be clear. Okay?
Are we going to talk about that in the tree canopy section?
I hope. Yes, please.
All right. Let's, let's reserve the specific comments. This is just about the process of getting to the specific-
That's the process. Yeah. So that we don't have to go checking. The other one, I really appreciate the deputy mayor's question. I, I believe that we talk about definitions, we talk about density, what is the maximum density? What does it mean? Who defines it? Where do we document it? How do we have it approved or discussed specifically by the city council or by the community in general? What kind of conversation have we had on it? Otherwise, we, we don't know what it is. So it's important, whether it be 35,000 units, 60,000 units, 90,000 units, or whatever it is. How do we arrive at that? When do we discuss it? How do we decide that is the goal we're shooting for? Because everything we do according to what we're just saying, we're basically laying out a whole bunch of altern, options. I, I wonder the word, I thought, options. Then we have to look at them all, and the community have to look at it. Then we have to get all the data or the information. And I think deputy mayor also mentioned one thing. We do need to have facts and data. You know? How many units are we talking about? Alternative three, quote, by what you're defining? What unit are we talking about? How many?
Boy, this is really taking us back to the beginning of the conversation that we started.
Let's summarize it. Yeah. So that we have. That's what we're talking about. We raised these questions at the council meetings. We're raising it now. So I was pleased to do that. Okay. And then I, I'd love to hear the timeline. It's very good, 20 years, but also it mentions dynamic. So I'd like to see, what do we see as the determination, decision we'll be making? What provision are we making for certain dynamic changes, which we are forecasting? I like that also. Emile's mentioned forecasting. So I'd like to know what forecast we have made? How much have we known, the council?
You know what, councilmember Lee? You're getting very in-depth into the root of why we're here, which we all covered at the beginning months ago.
But we're raising it now.
It's okay. They're good questions.
Deputy Mayor erased it. I follow on it.
No, I, I'm going to ask that you take this offline with the staff and get all those good questions answered.
They all need to hear this.
Well, this is-
Okay. Do we have?
Repeating the foundation of, of the work that we're doing.
I'm done.
So I'm going to ask that we answer those offline.
Yeah, we'll be happy to follow up.
Well, answer it, me. Okay?
Councilmember Lee, I'm going to ask-
One, one more, one more.
Oh, goodness.
We are wasting time by making, going back and forth. Let's just go straight to it. Okay? You, you mentioned about, you know, that the operation, the functional fire department, as we move forward, formally them, you know, in this process. I, I like that. That's good. But I think we need to know exactly when it happens, what we know, what information do we have, and how do we decide? We want more, we want less, or whatever. It's an ongoing process. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. I have two broad questions. And one comment. The first, Mike, I appreciate the food analogy, and I'm just going to pick up on that and check my understanding. You said that alternative zero, one, two, and three set all of the ingredients on the table, and that then the preferred, which I could, I think we should probably call alternative four, although I know we've been using the preferred, that there's no new ingredients added to that. Is that, did I get, get that right?
That's what I said. Yes.
Okay. So I, I beg to differ, because-
And I can see where you're going with this.
You can see where I'm going with this, because for 18 months, alternatives zero, one, two, and three had certain things in there. There are some things in alternative four, like neighborhood centers at mixed-use low that were never in any of the alternatives for the last 18 months. Same thing with some of the residential things that we're considering. So those actually, if we added them, which the planning commission did not suggest we do, that would be adding a new ingredient to the table at the very last minute, correct?
That's correct. Thank you for finding the, the flaw in my analogy.
And there's, and there's more than just that one, but that's the one I want to-
And if I could, and if I could just, if I could just add on to that, because you are correct, and that the analogy wasn't quite, as good as I had hoped.
It was a good analogy, it just wasn't perfect.
Wasn't perfect by any stretch, and I, and I knew it wouldn't be. But this is, but part of the point that I wanted to make also is that we are using a lot of the ingredients that we've already tried in the other options or alternatives. So this is adding some other ingredients that, that we want to test out, but it's also combining some different ingredients to see how they work together.
Right.
So that was part of the point I was trying to make there, but, but you're right. There are some new ingredients that are not, and the neighborhood centers is a good example of that.
And that's, yeah, and that's, and we'll talk about that at neighborhood centers, but the mixed-use medium was not in any alternative before them.
That's correct. And we will talk some more about that when we get to the neighborhood centers.
Okay. So I just want to have another really broad understanding checked. So when the city first adopted the growth targets of 35,000 new housing units, 70,000 new jobs, I rem, you know, I was on the committee, the regional committee that, that worked on that. I remember us thinking, you know, gulp, this is going to be really hard, because as we're zoned today, we only have capacity for maybe 27,000 housing units. We didn't ever think the jobs were going to be an issue. But my understanding, and it hasn't been clearly laid out here, but my understanding is that because of the upzone that we did at East Main, and because of the House bills, 1110 and 1337, even if we changed nothing else in the city, we went to alternative zero, which I'm not suggesting we do, but if we went to alternative zero, we would meet our growth targets. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that is correct. We would meet our growth targets.
So I think that that's important for council to, to know and understand, that alternatives one through four are all about growth targets plus, and some of them are plus, 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 plus. So then my comment is, that is for both the public and the council, because I know staff knows this. I found, I thank you for providing this land use key. I thought this was so interesting, because I didn't understand, even last week, and I'm the liaison of the planning commission, what some of these designations meant. I thought that our suburban was more dense than our low, because it sounds like it would be. But our suburban includes duplexes, triplexes and cottages, and our low, which sounds like it's one-acre lots or half-acre lots, is actually, includes multifamily. So that is actually a higher density than our suburban than RLL, which is the large lot, one to 1.8 acres. So having this next to us, I would encourage the public to look at this, and my colleagues to look at this. This really helps me understand more what is being proposed, because, like I said, even though I'm paying attention, I didn't fully understand it until I, I really studied this, and even this doesn't even have, always have heights in it. So I think that this is a good tool. Thank you for providing it. My comments are done. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
If I could just add one thing to the, to the comment about the, the growth, the different alternatives and the amount of growth that's in all of those. While it is correct that we have the capacity in our, our no-action alternative, a lot of the growth that we're proposing is in the Wilberton subarea. So that's one reason that we're seeing that, that increase over what our current plan is. It's not saying that it's all there, but that's a significant part of that growth.
And this process gives us an opportunity to, to guide that growth.
Correct. That's what, that's what this is about. This is, this is the, the council's vision. You're ult, you're the ultimate chef, if I can continue that analogy. You get to, you get to decide what the, what the final dish looks like, and that will come to you from the planning commission and the other boards and commissions, as Emile mentioned. They'll be doing a lot of work in, in going through all of this information that's in the draft EIS, the final EIS, the other technical studies that were done as part of that, and the public input that will still be a part of that process. There's a lot more of that to happen before that comes back to you. Wilberton will come to you first, and then the, the comprehensive plan will come to you several months later.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes, you have a general question?
Actually, just the statement, I just want to say that I really appreciate your-
Actually, just a statement. I just want to say that I really appreciate your clarifying this. This is, this is a very complex piece, and it is a, you know, you're going from just, you know, baking some, doing some scrambled eggs and adding a lot of stuff to it, you know, making it better. And I think we're on a good path, and I hope everybody's gotten the idea that there's no decisions have been made of what we're going to do, this or that. We're working, looking at all of these, and that's very important. And we're looking at a city that's changing, looking at things that are changing a lot and growth, and people want to have better community, and I think we, this gives us an option, looking at all of these, and I really like the way you put this out here, to get to a, a resolutions that will be good. And we, we have to have the attitude right now that we're not dissing anything. We're not saying this is the best way to go right now. We're looking at all the options so we come back and make a rational decision for the city, and we're going to get a lot of input by it. So that's, that is a much better atmosphere than we had a couple of weeks ago, where it was kind of, and looking at things where something's been made different, expectations were changed or whatever. So I just want to say I, I'm really pleased with the way we're going on this now, and so let's get down to really digging into the, the issues and what we need to look at now and go ahead forward. But thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. So let's go ahead and look at the Wilberton study area slide, if we can, which is nineteen. There you go. So what is proposed on the slide is what we kind of had a consensus for last week. And I'm going to start us off by saying I feel good about this. So we've already studied alternatives two, three, and one, and now we're considering the hybrid between two and three. And it's not making a decision, it's just studying. And so if anybody has any comments or questions about this, go ahead and raise your hand. Otherwise, I'll assume that we're okay with it. So councilmember Lee, go ahead.
I had a lot of concern about this last time we discussed this. As we mentioned, we have agreed to all these general statements that we're making. We need to have data. We need to have what is, you know, the facts. What do we need? What are we looking for? And how many units do we think we have? You talk about conservation. I don't know what conservation has for Wilberton. We have, for the, maybe the overall, the city. But my propose, my contention is we, we need to maximize the potential of Wilberton. If we do that, you know, I don't know what our council's objective is. If it's thirty-five thousand, I just heard from councilmember Robertson, we're already meeting it. So what more do we have to do? If we're looking at seventy thousand, well, okay, so what's the Wilberton area can provide? If Wilberton can provide the rest of it, then we leave the rest of the city alone.
Can you mention whether you're feeling pro asking staff to do the hybrid of, of two and three?
I, I would like to see all options.
Well, they've already done one, two, and three, but they haven't done the hybrid. So are you in favor of them doing an analysis on...
I, no, I'm not. I don't know what you mean by hybrid. I want to know what is the minimum, what's the maximum?
Explain how, what we've already done, and then what we're proposing to do next. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So what we've already done is explored alternatives one, two, and three, and we did hear a lot of comment from particularly stakeholders in the study area, support for alternative three. We have heard that. The hybrid is a hybrid of alternatives two and three, and it's slightly different from alternative three, and then it looks at slightly lower density in some areas to the east of the East Rail Trail, within, again, within the study area. And it looks at additional opportunity for residential, which would be more similar to alternative two, where we looked at more opportunity for residential of a variety of scales. So that is what is in the preferred alternative.
Just the hybrid. Let's just call it the hybrid.
The hybrid.
Yes. And so I understand, it's my understanding, the deputy mayor informed me of this as well, that this study that we're proposing will provide us the data that will help us make a decision as to which direction we want to ultimately go.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so this is a fact-seeking action that we're asking you to do if we go that direction?
Correct.
Okay.
The fact I'm looking for is what's the maximum we can do?
Uh, let's go on to councilmember Stokes.
Oh, no, I'm asking, they haven't answered me. That's the fact I need.
We're not making any decisions.
No, not decision, but your scope is already limiting to whatever you say you're going to look at, which is not as intense as it could be.
The maximum, the max, if I may, councilmember Lee, the maximum was studied as alternative three.
Okay.
And that is still a possibility. That could be where the...
Is, is it the maximum?
That's the maximum.
Why? I asked you, how do you determine that? I was asking about the topography. I was asking about line of sight.
Honestly, honestly, I'm going to take a break. We're going to take a break.
You're going to take a break.
No, we're going to take a break. We're going to resume in ten minutes. All right. All right, any other comments or questions on the Wilberton study area as proposed? Not seeing any. Oh, please. Okay, so that's good. Let's go ahead and move on to the mixed-use centers. Slide twenty. That thing is so stubborn. We do, we do have it in front of us in our packet here. If you, it looks like this, and it's page twenty on it. So are there any comments or questions on what's proposed for mixed-use centers? Okay, let's go on to neighborhood centers. And that's twenty-one, if you get there.
And I'm hoping we can get there. There was a request for some additional information about the individual centers that we have to share with you, if we can solve our technological problems. And again, I think you do have those in front of you, so we can speak to them for the time being.
Sure, go ahead.
So Emile, do you want to walk through? We, first, we have the neighborhood center building types. Just as a reminder, we showed you this last week just to give you a sense of the different scale for the, the stories that, that we're talking about. And as councilmember Robertson pointed out, we have only analyzed the low-rise, the mixed-use low, for all of those six neighborhood shopping centers. So the, the question, we're asking for some additional guidance from the council tonight because there were lots of different comments last week. We want to make sure that we get some clarity around what it is you would like us to look at, whether that is just certain centers or all of the centers. If you want us to look at the full range with the mixed-use medium, which goes up seven to ten stories, there was also some conversation last week about maybe looking at something that's less than that, maybe in the five to seven range, looking at each of those. And again, nothing's final this evening. This is just to study it and see if it applies, if it should be applied in certain areas in the future or not. The information may come back, and you may decide it makes sense here, but it doesn't make sense here.
So you already gathered information for the low, which is two to four stories, low-rise?
That's correct.
And now you're asking if we want you to gather more information for what shopping center at what level?
Correct.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Let's start with councilmember Robertson and then go on to councilmember Barxdale.
Looks like we have our slides back.
So that low-rise, that is, it shows a two-story, right? That doesn't show a four-story?
That's, uh, it looks like it might be three stories.
Is it three? It looks, yeah, it might be three. Okay, but it could go a floor above that. And, and so some of these neighborhood centers were CB, community business, which is what Crossroads and Factoria, that some of the more intense shopping centers are also zoned. And some, like Newport Hills and Bell East, were in North Town, were neighborhood business, which is smaller, lower, yeah, rise. And the, what was studied in alternatives one through three was making them all, whether CB or NB, mixed-use low, which is two to four stories, which I, I think in every case is a slight upzone, isn't it?
Yeah, as we looked at the, the current definitions of community business or CB or neighborhood business or NB, it does appear that they would be a, a slight upzone based on if the existing zoning was CB or NB.
So how high under existing zoning is, can NB be?
NB, you can go up to twenty feet, and you can go up to thirty feet if you have residential on an upper story.
So that's two and a half to three, depending on, okay.
Uh, with the proviso, it's not more than two stories in total.
Oh, it's not more than two stories. Okay, so two stories. Community business, what is that today?
Forty-five feet.
Forty-five, so four stories.
Can you stay with stories and...
Yeah, forty-five feet is the zoning, so that would equate to four stories.
Okay, because we have a picture with stories.
Yes.
So, so the first picture there is taller than any of the ones that were NB, which I think is Lakemont, Newport Hills, Bell East, and North Town. That's a full-story taller than is current zoning today, right? And that's actually only three, so it would be double the height of current zoning if the mixed-use low goes through. So, and then the CB, at four stories, this would be kind of the same for them. What, what, what difference would there be for CB and mixed-use low, if they're both about four stories max?
It's going to relate more to the Lucca that we do down the road because, as you know, the, the CB and NB haven't been updated in, in really years. So it is a thought that if they were both under that mixed-use low designation, we would want to go back and kind of modernize and rethink the CB and NB land use codes.
Okay, so maybe more housing would be allowed and things like that, mixed, true mixed-use with housing and commercial. Okay, so I wanted to understand that. So I, I feel pretty strongly that for eighteen months, we've looked at this as mixed-use low, which particularly with the NB centers, is double the current height of what is allowed today. And I feel like it's a last-minute change. The planning commission didn't recommend it. One of them was a site-specific request of that twenty-three request, which the staff says we shouldn't do. I don't think we should do that. Particularly, I, I feel like that's what's been advertised in, in alternatives one through three. We should, we, a lot of the neighborhoods don't like mixed-use low because it's an increase, but they're willing to accept the increase as something that's not a huge, huge change. I mean, double the height, but still not a huge, huge change. Mixed-use medium, which is seven to ten stories, is a significant, significant shift. So I am personally very opposed to that. The planning commission voted to stay with alternatives one through three in the preferred, which is mixed-use low. I know there's some interest in potentially looking at five to seven stories. You know, I would just as soon stay with mixed-use low, but if we are going to do the five to seven stories, which is on the CB, which should be limited to the CB designations, not any of the ones that are NB, because that would be still an increase for them, but it would be a significant increase for the ones that were NB. Remember, CB is Crossroads and Factoria. Those are much bigger. They're not neighborhood shopping centers. Those are really commercial centers, and they too shouldn't be treated the same as one another. So I would encourage the council to accept the planning commission recommendation, to accept what was in alternatives one through three and go with mixed-use low. But if you want to depart from that, look at the five to seven stories on the ones that were zoned CB, but not the ones that were zoned NB. Thank you.
That is very well done. Yeah, councilmember Barxdale.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the discussion, clarification on CB versus NB. I guess my question on the, any, are there any neighborhood centers that have the density of medium currently in terms of residential units maybe?
Right now, the only shopping center that has that type of density is the, the one along one, one-fiftieth and East Gate, but it's, it's NMU, which is the neighborhood mixed-use, which is a, it's roughly a forty units per acre zoning that you can get an additional density bonus if you do ground-floor retail. So that was part of the East Gate plan. It's not on our list of so-called neighborhood shopping centers, though it is still a shopping center. It's a kind of a different category of them. But that would be the only one, I, from my recollection, that would be that, that intensity right now.
Got it. And I think what we had talked about was the max for any one of the possible shopping centers was five to seven, or were there any that, I just can't recall if we had suggested any at mixed-use medium?
The mixed-use medium actually went seven to ten stories maximum.
Yeah.
Sorry, in previous council discussions, were there any neighborhood centers, I can't remember, that we were thinking of as a mixed-use medium?
I think the, the recap of the July seventeenth was, I believe, Kelsey Creek, and at that point, North Town were the two that were, I believe it was MU six or MU LM, which is somewhere in between, so essentially five to seven stories, or at least the two that were mentioned at that meeting.
Got it. I guess what I would, instead of maybe, because I, I think the alternative was to go through each one, I guess I would just propose that we look at five to seven across all of them, even if we're not going to use it as a study. And it would give us a sense of sort of the, the book-in, if you will, for each of the neighborhood centers and provide the data. Otherwise, what we're essentially doing is making a decision today, which is what we're not doing, right? We're waiting until after we get these data back about the impacts to make a decision. So I just want to make sure that those data are available to make a comparison.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Excuse me, Mayor, could I just add one thing? I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Sure, maybe you could talk about the pros and cons of, of asking for a study. Maybe you don't intend to use the information on it as well.
Well, I'm happy to, unless you'd like me to wait until everyone's had a chance to weigh in on that. I just wanted to add one other piece of information that is pertinent to the discussion. Later on, we're going to talk about the site-specific requests, and I just wanted to point out that four of those are specific requests in neighborhood centers. So just, so you know, we're actually resolving, hopefully through this discussion, those four at least. But those were specific requests that came in from those four centers, and that was Kelsey Creek, Newport Hills,
North Town.
Lake Hills and...
I believe that was North Town.
And North Town, yes. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Well, I'm not, I've been looking at the map while we're chatting here, and the neighborhood business designations go to Newport, North Town, and Bell East, right? That's what the map is telling me.
Yeah, it's North Town, Newport Hills, and I believe Bell East.
And then the...
And Lakemont.
Community business.
I'm sorry, neighborhood business, yeah.
Community business, Kelsey Creek, Lake Hills, and Lakemont. Am I leaving anything out?
That's correct.
So your, councilmember Robertson is asking for a distinction between those two, and councilwoman Barxdale is saying let's just do all of them at the medium level.
For the study?
Yes, for the study, for the study. Yes, okay. Deputy Mayor? Or, or, no, did you want to say something?
That was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Go ahead. Yes, now I'm sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, good conversation so far, and I appreciate the, some of the, the data on this and, and discussion around it. For me, though, look, I've spoken to a lot of residents, and many residents are very concerned about just, just avalanche of density. And we've always had this, the growth goes in the growth corridors. Let's keep the density away from the neighborhoods. And I feel, and I know it's just a study, but I'm also just concerned that we're having a study going beyond the mixed-use low-rise. I, I, you know, I think that was the recommendation of the planning commission. I, I think they had the, the, the right idea, that they had the right recommendation about keeping it in the mixed-use low-rise. I think that's what residents want. Those residents that are going to be mostly impacted by that increased density to, immediately to the, to their neighborhood. And, and time and time again, residents are very concerned about it. They expect it in the growth corridors, that's fine. They don't expect it at their neighborhood local shopping center or stores, et cetera. So as councilman Robertson has already pointed out regarding the, the, the amount of growth, we're already going to hit our targets, et cetera. There's no reason to add this additional density to our neighborhoods if we don't need to do it, and I don't see a reason to do it. So therefore, I would encourage my colleagues to stick to the planning commission recommendation of the mixed-use low-rise. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sun?
Yes, thank you. I was trying to understand also, so I believe... I was trying to understand also, so I believe last time we said that we were only talking about the shopping centers at this point. So the Way Stations, Retail Incorporated, and standalone complexes, and undefined with no retail anchor, those are not in discussion.
Correct.
Right, so it is just the one, two, three, four, five, six different shopping centers that are part of the conversation. And then I also want to make sure that I understand, so if we don't do any analysis now, then we will actually not have any type of comparative analysis of what any of this would look like. So if we want to have any kind of data-informed decisions, we wouldn't actually have that data, is that correct? So if we only looked at the MUL, then none of the other options would have any data for comparison, is that correct?
That is correct. In the DIS, we just looked at MUL.
Okay. And can you just make sure that I'm clear on, and when we actually do analysis, so we have comparison, we're going to do an economic analysis that's site-specific to the shopping centers, we're going to do a transportation analysis, tree canopy, environmental impact, so all the things that we had in the packet of information in that other really lengthy table. Having those studied actually gives us the comparisons with data. Because without it, we don't actually have any more data, is that right?
Well, the final EIS will look at whatever the preferred alternative ends up being. It'll be able to compare it back to the draft EIS alternatives. Some of those other topics, as I think as Michael pointed out, they are, we're doing it at a citywide level. It's not going to drill down to a specific parcel and exactly what's happening on that parcel, but it will look at it as a broader thing about what happens when you have MU, ML, or MUM for a neighborhood retail center, and look at it from impacts like displacement, or amount of density, or traffic, or things that might happen when you're adding that amount of density to an area.
Okay. And I know when we were, it's, the affordable housing isn't part of the discreet conversation right now, because we're just looking at these different options. But ultimately, what we have heard in the past is that when we get to kind of the LM of the five to seven stories is when potentially we can have a five over one or five over two, where the potential for affordable housing is more of a potential than a ten-story building or a two-story building. So I just want to check that, because it was something that, as we've talked about affordable housing, there's been a lot of conversation about at what scale do the financials actually pencil out to be able to build affordable housing? And I know we're not talking about that particular thing right now, but without the analysis, we won't actually have any kind of comparison. Is that right?
That is, that's correct. It would be, whatever ends up being in the preferred alternative would be what we are studying for those areas. And there clearly is a relationship to when up zones happen, and our other item on the schedule is the affordable housing and looking at either voluntary or mandatory programs when up zones occur.
And when do we talk about the affordable housing? Is it within this discussion? So as these analysis comes in? Yep, okay. Okay, thanks.
So where do you think you are on this?
I think we would, I think it would be prudent for us to have information so that we can evaluate what an MU, I guess, LM looks like from the standpoint of a comparison for some of these neighborhood centers.
So I think you reflect Councilmember Barksdale, which is the, studying the MUM across all these.
No, the LM, I believe.
MUM low, five to seven, mid-rise, yeah.
I think Steph knows what I mean.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes, followed by Councilmember Lee.
Well, I think if we're studying these and looking for the future, and we, it's going to take a long time to get these things put in place, I think we would be better served to actually take a look at these and see. And with the possibility of affordable housing coming in and one of the issues. And I do know that, yes, there are a lot of people in the communities don't want to change from, you know, one-story buildings for their shopping center thing. I think there are a lot of people who would like to see something different. This is not something that says if we decide this now, that's what we're going to do. But I think we would be kind of amiss if we didn't take a look at it. And it may actually help us look at this and understand, one way or the other, what is best and what we can do. And in the time period we're talking about, the neighborhoods are going to change. They're going to grow. And with the affordable housing piece coming in with the state legislature's enactment, that's going to change somewhat, too. So I think we shortchange ourselves, and I think we shortchange the neighborhoods if we don't give a chance to look at this and take a, what is, what can be done now, or what can be done later. Make a decision now on something that impacts us five, six years down the line is kind of, then we have to go back and do a lot more work to catch up with it. So I think something that would get us to look at this is just a looking at it. But I think it'll educate us a lot more. And this is very important, to have good, you know, places in the community. And it's also important in terms of affordable housing and other aspects. So I'm, I think taking a look at it won't hurt anything. I think it'll help us a lot.
So you're suggesting the same as Councilmembers Zion and Barksdale, that it'd be mid-use, multi, what is it? Mixed-use, thank you, mid-rise, five to seven for all the shopping centers. Losing my mind. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Robertson and Deputy Mayor Newhouse. I believe that.
Actually, they said two different things.
No.
Deputy Mayor Newhouse suggested that we do the low for all the shopping centers.
I can go.
Councilmember Robertson suggested that we do low for the.
I can go with both, but I prefer Councilmember Robertson's proposal, because, that's why I was so passionate about pushing so much on the Wobertan maximum density, because I agree with Deputy Mayor that we need to be looking at growth, at the growth center, urban center. And I believe that Wobertan is the center, and neighborhood center does not, doesn't meet that high standard and criteria. So if, you know, if we can take a look at even higher density for Wobertan, this may not even be a necessary conversation. So, right? So I support Jennifer Robertson's limit, lower density, but I agree that we need to focus on maximizing density in growth centers.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, you know, getting to go last now. My feeling is that I would like to study it, but does that mean that that is where we're going to go? I mean, what is the advantage or disadvantage? I guess what is, I already know the advantage of studying it. What's the disadvantage of studying it for the areas that we're, maybe want to stay lower than what we're studying it for?
I guess, I don't know if it's a disadvantage so much as maybe concern that we've heard expressed, that that may mean that that's what would be ultimately applied.
I know what the concern of the community is. I'm wondering if there's a disadvantage on our end.
A disadvantage to studying it?
Studying something higher than we intend to use.
I don't see a disadvantage from an analytical standpoint, because it does give us additional information that we can then use to determine where it might best fit or where it might not. It's additional information at this point, that's the advantage.
But does it mean that we're heading down that path, per se? If we study for a higher density, does that mean that we're necessarily going to get higher density? I mean, isn't that another conversation where we use the data that we've gathered to make that determination?
And that would be part of the information that the Planning Commission would use to determine where this would apply and make that recommendation to the city council. The commission may decide at the end of it all to stick with their original recommendation, to leave them all at mixed-use low. They may come back and suggest that some, or recommend that some of them would be at that mixed-use five to seven. Or even, well, if we limit it to five to seven, that's what we would study, and that would be the maximum that it could be in any of those areas.
So if you do mixed-use low, two to four stories, and nothing can get developed, and a developer comes in and says I could do it at five to seven stories, how hard would it be to go back five years from now and change that to the MUM?
Well, there's always the annual amendment process, and that's been used in the past for different requests, and that would still be a possibility in the future. So it just means that it wouldn't be part of this update. It would have to be an individual request that would come back at some point in the future or wait until the next update.
Yeah. For that reason, I'm more comfortable with Councilmember Robertson's recommendation, to be honest with you, because we still have flexibility down the road when we get, when we see the other, the other shopping centers, the CB ones, experimenting with the five to seven. And I know that we had a developer a number of years ago who was offering to put affordable housing there at two to four stories. So, okay. So, yes.
Can we have another round, just four questions? Is that okay?
Yep, start with Councilmember Robertson, do you have anything?
Well, yeah, I would just say, to answer your question, Mayor, and I appreciate the support, I think that the downside to studying something we wouldn't have any intention of doing is that it gives false expectation to the developers, and it gives false alarm to the neighborhoods. So, and I think that the preferred alternative, the reason it's being referred to as preferred, is it's meant to give not just more information, but better information of what we think we might do. So if we go with this preferred alternative, this is what the impacts will be. So just getting more and more information is not necessarily a good thing if it's not pertinent. So that's where I think putting something in there that is unrealistic to happen right now, like I said, it just causes expectation and alarm, depending on people's perspective. And so for that reason, I, like I said, my first preference was mixed-use low everywhere on these, but I think the compromised position is the five to seven on the CB-zoned properties. And it sounds like that's what the will of the council is, so I am supportive of that, thank you.
Councilmember Barksdale?
No, I think, I see the direction we're headed in, but I guess I would just say, you know, as I understood it, looking at the, at a little bit higher level helps us understand potential impacts. It doesn't necessarily mean that we would, that it would come back with that recommendation, but at least, you know, the council and the Planning Commission would have the data that they need. Just think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I think part of the disadvantages that we're saying that, I think we're getting away from the way we've managed growth in the city previously. I think if the fact that we're signaling that we're now looking at density in neighborhoods, I think that's sending the wrong message, and density at any cost. That's not what, that's not the reason why people move here and live here and work here and go to school here. Our neighborhoods are a treasure, and we need to protect them. Having said that, I can compromise and go with Councilmember Robertson's recommendation. But it's somewhat silly to think that it's going to come back to us, maybe not silly, but it's going to come back to us and that the Planning Commission is going to not follow what the council says, right? I mean, if we're all up here saying we want more density and more stories, most likely, that's something that they'll come back to us when the actual policy comes before us. So that's how these things can snowball, in my estimation. So again, I'd be willing to compromise with Councilmember Robertson's suggestion, but my preference would still be to keep it mixed-use low-rise.
Okay, Councilmember Zion?
Yes, thank you. You know, my hope is that when we look at the economic analysis that, when we get to that topic about affordable housing, that we really are looking at how to incent or look at ways that developments can be built for affordable housing so that the neighborhoods that we love are more affordable for more people. And then the part that we haven't talked about yet tonight that I would like to make sure is considered in here, because I didn't see it in the other, which we hear a lot about in the shopping centers, is anti-displacement. So I would like to better understand, as we move along in the process, where in the process we might be able to look at some policies that incent or phase development in a way that we don't end up with anti-displacement of the very neighborhood shops and restaurants that we love to frequent and support. So I don't know if you can provide any of that context here, but I think it would be an important piece that I didn't see in our PowerPoint presentation tonight, that I would like to get a sense and make sure that this is something we are going to look at. So just like we have tree canopy and looking at environmental impacts, those neighborhood local businesses are precious to us and is what makes the neighborhoods so great.
Mayor, if I could give just a brief response to that? The draft EIS did look at displacement potential in for residential as well as commercial in these areas. And there are some mitigation measures that are noted in there, most of which I think would be addressed through a land use code, particularly if we're talking about incentives or those types of things, or other requirements that may be put on redevelopment. Likewise, with the affordable housing. But I think there are also policies that would need to be in place to provide the basis for that, for that code in the future. So it's not something we need to put in this evening, but that's noted.
Okay, well, I look forward to when we have those discussions, because this is where it becomes our value base. We know that we need more affordable housing and that we want to make sure that our small businesses, our local businesses are taken care of. Thank you.
So you're still with the MUM for all five to seven stories? For all the shopping centers?
You know, my sense is that I can hear from the council that that isn't where we're headed. And I'm just saying that I want to make sure that as we look at those neighborhood centers, that we're focusing on two of the main things that we want to do, which is, you know, look at anti-displacement and affordable housing.
So we're trying to give direction on what to study?
So it sounds like the council is triangulating around.
We just want your opinion. I mean, you can give us your thoughts, and Councilmember Stokes and Lee have not weighed in yet again, so.
Well, you know, my initial discussion was that I always think it's helpful to have data-informed decisions and being able to look at alternatives so we actually can do comparable analysis is important. I also am very pragmatic about the fact that if that's not where the council wants to go as a whole, then that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stokes?
Well, actually, I think, I think you got some good answers to this. And I think we're going in a path that eventually will be better for all of us around, and things will change. I don't think it really makes a difference in the sense that we're going to look at these. I think it would be better to have taken a look at a higher density, particularly with the possibility of apartments above that and all. But I think this is not something that's going to happen tomorrow, and a lot of conversation will go forward, and we have opportunity to come back at it. I think neighborhoods will begin to look at their shopping centers, and if, you know, the neighbors want to make changes, we can work on that. And I think this will come about at some point in a good way for everybody. So I'm fine going with Councilmember Robertson's, Robinson, Robertson's approach.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I believe, and you will hear from the speakers as well, transparency, trust are very important. And I hope that part of that is. and I hope that part of that is expectation, uh, to provide, you know, consistency that people can trust us. So I feel that, uh, you know, I would, uh, hope that it was, I, we, we, yeah, it's realistic, uh, to stick with, uh, Councilmember Robertson's, you know, low rise. If we have to, obviously, if, uh, the need is there, it's a different story, but right now, based on what I, I hear, uh, we, we are in pretty good shape, so I would stick with the-
So Councilmember Robertson's was in neighborhood business M U L and in community business M U M?
M U M L.
M U M L?
Five to seven.
Yeah, five to seven. Thank you. All right, I think that's the direction for that.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the one that, uh, so you can see in front of you what we directed from last week. And if you're okay with it, you don't need to say anything, but if you want to make a change, or if you have questions, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any, so I assume that we're all good with that, as written. Then we have neighborhood residential. Counsel, there are some further discussion things here, so, uh, anybody have comments or questions on this?
Well, I, I would really like to see some work done.
I would really like to see some work done on the further discussion with the Overlake Farms parcel. And, uh-
I think that's being included in this, right?
Make sure it's included, right.
Yeah, okay. Yes, Councilmember Robertson?
So, um, I'm, I'm one slide ahead to the Overlake Farms, and, um, like I said, when I, at the beginning of the night on this, I thought that R low was lower than R suburban, and so when I spoke about this last time, I said, "Wait, we shouldn't do R low, we should do R suburban throughout here." And then, all of a sudden, it's come to our, the request is R medium. R medium is really multifamily, it's multifamily, uh, high, the high end of multifamily medium and multifamily high, is what that is. And R low is single-family urban residential, multifamily low, and multifamily medium. So I think that R low, um, on the north forty acres is plenty, um, because that still has some multifamily in it, as well as, it'll be the mix of the missing middle. So I personally support that, and I, I'm sure I opened this can of worms, because I didn't understand what the zoning meant, um, but, and the recommendation on the map in, uh, alternative three was what?
Uh, alternative three, correct me if I'm wrong Tara, was-
Because that was the densest.
R, R low, just for that, um, the darker yellow colored parcel right there.
R low, and then, the, what is staff's recommendation on this tonight, is it still, what's on the left, the preferred?
Uh, well, it's, uh, staff recommendation remains the same from when we took it to the planning commission, which was the R low, we're bringing this back based on council desire to see what Overlake Farms was, uh, was requesting.
Okay, and I just didn't understand what even was recommended, so I'm okay with the preferred alternative on this, um, as it is, because I think that that adds a lot of density, because right now it's R L L, what would be R, it's like one acre lots, right? Under today's zoning, or 1.8?
It's the one, there's a, it's one, one acre and 1, 1.8.
So, yeah, so then that takes a R one or R 1.8 and makes it basically single-family urban residential, multifamily low, and multifamily medium. So I think that's quite a lift, um, I think it's appropriate lift, I think this is going to be a great development, um, but I think that's, that's, that's an adequate lift, in my opinion, so I support the staff and planning commission recommendation, thanks.
Okay, so we have Councilmember Stokes with the request, and Councilmember Robertson with the preferred alternative. Who else would like to, go ahead, Councilmembers on?
Okay, so, I think I also want to have clarity as well, and mainly, uh, my clarity is around process. So this particular one, we have a preferred alternative and a request from Overlake Farms. How is this different than all these ones that we're going to be talking about later that we said we're not going to consider? I, I just want to make sure that we are, um, treating requests in an equitable way, so can you just help me understand how this one is different than, I know it's later in the, in the presentation where we're going to be looking at, or, um, validating that we aren't actually looking at those others? So can you just help me understand?
Sure. Since this was brought up by the council last week, we were going to be spotlighting it anyway for your discussion, thus we didn't put on, put it on the list of twenty-three. But it's a, it's a similar type of request that we've been, um, engaging with Overlake Farms even, uh, prior to the launch of the, the comp plan process, and, uh, they did submit comments during the, the E I S comment period, and they're, they are asking for something that is above what was studied in the, um, draft, uh, E I S, so that's why we're, we're highlighting this one for you, but it's, it's similar in nature to the other twenty-three.
Okay, so maybe the part I'm confused by is if I look at the map, it looks like the, where R low is, is, is switched, and then the request is actually R medium versus the preferred was R large, so there- R low and R large, right?
Large lot, yeah.
And, and then we have R low and R medium, so am I, are they asking for a slightly lower than our preferred?
No, I'll just, let me walk it through, so on the, the graphic on the left is the preferred alternative that went through the planning commission, all the yellow, the light yellow, is R large lot, and that is essentially, um, one to 1.8, 1.8 DUs per acre, 20 units per acre, so it's the existing, essentially the existing zoning up there. And the darker yellow was the staff and planning commission's recommendation for R low, which, um, Councilmember Robertson correctly pointed out, is seven and a half units to fifteen units per acre.
Okay.
And then on the right-hand side, just to be clear, Overlake Farms is seeking more density than that, so the R low again is 7.5 to 15 DUs per acre, and R medium is roughly 20 to 30 DUs per acre.
Okay, and then, to my original question, which is, we have the twenty-three parcels that we said we are not going to consider, so these twenty-three are different than this one because the process had already begun in terms of discussion, that's what I thought I just heard you say? And that's why they're being, their request is being considered, and these ones are not?
We put this in the PowerPoint because, uh, there was a, a, uh, request at the meeting last week that we highlight this one for you, um, so you could, uh, definitely discuss it. We don't know if you want to discuss any of the other twenty-three, but this one was pulled out separately to bring back for discussion.
Was it part of the twenty-three originally?
Um, it, it would have been a twenty-fourth if you hadn't mentioned it-
Okay.
-last week, so it's, it's the, similar in nature.
Okay, I, I will just say that I don't know about my other colleagues, I, we hadn't seen that there were twenty-three other ones, and so I'm just trying to, uh, reflect on how this one is different than the other twenty-three in terms of how we are, um, considering that. That's information I didn't have a week ago, and so I look forward to hearing from my colleagues, it's just something I'm thinking about here, thanks.
Do you have a comment on where you would go with this, since it is on our list of whether we approve this or not?
I'd like to hear from my colleagues, because I, I would say that last week I did not realize that there were twenty-three others that were, uh, perhaps with a request different than the preferred alternative, and, um, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Deputy de Mayor?
Um, I'm okay with the, um, preferred alternative on this, thank you.
Hold on, let me... Okay, Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. What is the overall, uh, plan vision do we have for this whole area? I see this is just part of, uh, you know, a bunch of other land use, you know? So what is, is this isolated, is what's going on in the future, what do we vision to see, whether the request is, uh, reasonable as a transition into something that may be compatible with our overall land use, or, or what, you know? So how did you decide in the commission that this is the preferred alternative versus what they request?
I'll defer to, to Tara on that, to give some context.
Thank you.
Sure, um, so in the preferred, um, in the draft E I S, um, as Emile mentioned, Overlake Farms has been very engaged, in fact, they submitted, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, amendments, uh, a few years ago, and then, um, did not, chose not to move forward. And so as I said, we, they were very engaged, they provided comments during the scoping comment period, which was really early on in the process, and so based on their feedback, we did analyze, um, under the three alternatives, different, different densities for their site, with the understanding, um, you know, part of, uh, affordable housing is an issue, how engaging or trying to achieve additional housing, uh, within the city is also something that is a goal, uh, something we have to do under our Vision 2050 and regional mandates. And then, of course, we have eleven, ten requirements to achieve missing middle, so that was the intent with us, really looking at the R low and R large lot, um, um, kind of looking at the surrounding zoning and land use designations, and also, uh, aligning it with some of the regional requirements, and then the city's goals.
So I think the, the basis that for the preferred alternative, correct me if I'm wrong Tara, is really looking at the context for that area, and the other things that we know we need to do citywide in terms of additional housing.
Okay, did you have any, uh, community feedback, uh, in terms of your, you know, consideration of one or the other?
Primarily from, uh, the Overlake Farms, uh, property owners.
Okay, so just from the property owners only?
I believe we did receive some comments, uh, today-
Yep.
-that were in opposition to, uh, an increase.
Okay, thank you.
Can you tell me where the, um, city limit line is on this map?
It's at the, it's at the north edge of the property, isn't it?
Yeah, where, where it goes from the, uh, comp plan overlay colors to the, the non-colors, so you can see part of the lake that is in, um, there's portions of Kirkland and Redmond just right there on the top of the map, that's where it switches over.
Okay, just checking that. Uh, so, do you know where you land on this, Councilmember Lee?
Uh, well, I don't have that much information, but I assume that the staff and the planning, uh, planning commission has looked into it.
Okay.
And I, you know, we heard what the property owner has presented, and, uh, so, based on that, I would say that I don't have any strong, uh, data to unfortunately support the requests, uh, from the Overlake Farm at this time, so, uh-
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Braxdale?
Support moving forward with the preferred alternative?
You're with the preferred alternative, okay? Okay, so I am with the requested one because we're just studying it, and I think this could be a real opportunity. I know just north of this property is, uh, multi-use, multifamily, sorry, uh, and, uh, so it's, it's consistent with the, what's there in the, in the area on the north end of the property, so I'd be curious to see what the impact would be, so I'd like to study that. Councilmember Zahn? What say you?
Well, I would say that I, I am struggling right now with the fact that if we said yes to this request, but we say no to the other twenty-three, then, um, I, I'm just struggling with how we say to the other twenty-three parcel property owners that we're going to stick with the preferred alternative there, and that we're going to consider the request here, um, especially in light of our conversation related to the neighborhood centers, where we said there are other ways through comp plan amendments to consider, um, a different upzone, so I, I am, uh, unless there is a way for us to really look at it from an equitable review standpoint, I, I'm going to find myself in that preferred alternative just from a consistency standpoint, otherwise I, um, I, I wonder how we tell the other property owners that, um, we are treating them differently than this one.
Can I just weigh in for a second?
Sure.
Um, I will just say that I have spoken with the family who's made this request for over a year, and there were many ways that they could have applied for this increased density, and we recommended that they do it through the comp plan process. I'm not sure why the planning commission didn't choose this as something to consider. I had not seen the applications of the other ones, I have not discussed these other properties with other people, it was not on my radar, and I don't know if they had been working with you behind the scenes, and I never knew it, but this property in particular has been very thoughtful, they've met with me, they've met with you, they've met with other council members, and this was the path that we told them to go, so, um-
Okay, well, Mayor, that, that's new information that I, I hadn't heard, that's, I mean, so, maybe I'm just not speaking very clearly, that's what I'm trying to understand, so, you know, if the staff have been communicating with the owners that this is the, uh, the pathway to, um, the changing the zoning for their parcel, and that's a different interaction than the other twenty-three that's on here, then that changes how I see things, but until the, the mayor brought this up, I just hadn't, I, I didn't have that context, and so, um, this is what I needed to understand. So if, from a staff standpoint, can you just validate that we did tell the property owners that the, instead of submitting a comp plan amendment, that this was the approach that we were pursuing?
Mayor, if I could speak to that briefly, sorry, Emile. Yes, we did meet with the property owners, we've also met with some of the other property owners that have submitted requests through this process, so this is part of the process, and it's not necessarily, I, I understand the, the question about equity, uh, the equity is in the process itself, not necessarily in the decision that's made by the planning commission or the city council. The process, the equity is about a consideration, so this is given the same consideration as other requests that we've received, um, staff evaluated those, and in the case of the other twenty-three that are on the list, staff recommended, in a couple of cases, staff recommended something different than what the planning commission ultimately, uh, prefer, uh, ultimately selected, I should say, um, and in other cases, they agreed with the staff recommendation. So, I, I guess, Councilmember Zahn, from an equity standpoint, I think that they've been treated the same as others that have gone through this same process, a, as have all the other twenty-three on the, on the list.
Maybe the part that I'm not clear on is then, um, why the recommendation was for the preferred alternative and not the request from the property owner then? Could you be a, a little more succinct about that then?
I'll, I'll start with that, and I'll ask staff to elaborate on it, it, just like all of the other ones that we looked at, uh, the, in some cases, the staff didn't feel the request was consistent with the direction that, uh, that the plan was intended to go in a certain area. Uh, in this particular area, I think, as Tara mentioned, we looked at the context of what's the zoning around that property, what are we looking at in terms of future development, and how comparable is that, is it going to be compatible with that, uh, over time? Uh, is this an area that we see in transitioning into higher densities over time? In this particular area, we don't see a lot of transition to a higher density, uh, in the future, some, which is why we went with the recommendation that's more than what's currently allowed, but not as much as what, uh, what the applicants had requested. I don't know, Emile or Tara, if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think it, it was about proximity to other uses, we, but we have other cities on the north, but we also have other uses to the south, especially south of that south parcel, and, um, just, I mean, in order of magnitude, twenty acres at that R low, um, depending if it's seven and a half up to fifteen, is a hundred fifty to three hundred units, so it is, there's still is a, a quite amount of, uh, development that could happen even under the, the R low, so we were looking at, at that as well.
I think what her question is, is why did this get teased out, not the other ones? I mean, I- Because we asked.
As far as, yeah, you asked about this one, we-
Right.
For many of the others, we had the same internal thought process and working with stakeholders on those other ones as well.
Okay, so any, any decision on your side on this? Councilmember Zahn, you're kind of still undecided, I think.
Well, no, I would say that based on what I'm hearing, and the, it sounds like staff did consider this thoroughly as well as the other ones.
And the planning commission also considered it, yeah.
And the planning commission, that I'm at the preferred alternative because otherwise I think that we are sending a message that, that, that council members that didn't understand there were 23 others, we said, oh, this seems like a good opportunity to look at something. But it sounds like what you're saying is you guys have already thoughtfully looked at it. And that if we were to say yes to this request, then potentially we have other requests that we didn't actually give the same due consideration to. And that just doesn't seem right to me. Thanks.
Okay. So that kind of answers the question of preferred versus the request. So there's a majority that's going with the preferred alternative. Just one second, okay. There's another question here that Councilmember Robertson asked, which should RLL be replaced by R suburban citywide? I think that that is a big question that needs a lot of study. Did you expect us to address this?
It was just kind of a comment.
Okay.
So I, unless council wants to take it up, I'm not pushing that.
I'm going to take that out.
I just, you know, it was just kind of pondering as I was talking.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Lee?
We haven't answered the question where I'm on yet. I indicated earlier that I went go for the prefer because I lack the information on the request. But after listening to you, that's the frustrating part, is there's a lot of different situations, circumstances. I have no clue. It's not privy to, you know, to me, anyway. I don't know who else do. So, you know, as you can tell, this is a very related, complex decision that affect, you know, other properties, other situations. And the owners itself, they are, they're them. They're different than any other 22 or 3 properties or whoever else we're talking about. So I think in order to make the real good decision, have transparency, consistency, we got to know all that information from the questions we raised. It's just because somebody else does know the answer, doesn't mean that we all have the same information. So I find it very challenging. So that's why we are having discussions. And that's how it comes out, you know, whatever situation is. Yeah. So based on what I see, you know, I'm still at the quandary whether preferred, as you mentioned, is what, you know, preferred? Or should we be considering whatever special circumstance that the property owner or mayor says so? That's, right? There may be circumstances, extenuating circumstances that might make this different from the other, you know, property owners or from the rest of the area. So I feel that I'm kind of still struggling. I'm not getting all the information I need to make my decision. So...
Well, the good news for you is that there's a majority that do know what they want to do.
That's bad news for Bellevue. Good news for me, maybe. So I will...
So we have a consensus on that one. Okay. All right. The next one is affordable housing. Okay. So this is what we had kind of agreed on last meeting. And the only clarification, I will say that the MFTE program, as Tara said in the presentation, is for high-rise because we already have a good MFTE for low-rise. So it was just to look at how we might incentivize affordable housing in high-rise. Okay. So, we are on page 32 in the packet of that, those things. And they're double-sided. Councilmember Stokes makes it hard. So, go ahead, Councilmember Robertson?
I just have a question. So the three things on this slide, we have this planning commission preferred alternative, and then the three other bullets under FEIS, that we're going to study both mandatory and incentive systems. We're going to study the impacts of other affordable housing programs, including MFTE rental and ownership. And we're going to study the impact of mandatory inclusionary on the price of market rate units. If I agree that this is the direction, we're going to do all that, right?
That's correct.
Then I am totally comfortable with this. I think we should look at all of this. I think this is comprehensive, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted a little further clarification on why we're looking at both mandatory and incentives. Incentive system has worked well for us. Why are we looking at the mandatory as well?
The short answer to that is we want to see if it makes a difference in terms of the number of units that we could generate and how that might work in conjunction with some of the increases that we're looking at. As we've talked about before, the only opportunity we have to apply any type of a mandatory inclusionary system is when we do an increase in the capacity. And since we're looking at significant increases in capacity in several areas, particularly in Wilberton, this would be the opportunity to look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Any thoughts if you're comfortable with this, or you want to listen to?
I'm going to wait.
Okay. Who else has a comment? Councilmember, well, I'm going to say I'm comfortable with what you're putting forth here. Go ahead, Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. So I just want to make sure that when we talk about incentive systems or mandatory, does fee and lieu only fit in the incentive side and not the mandatory?
It could fit in both.
Okay, so this, we would be looking at all of those potential pieces? And then, just to be really clear, when we say affordable housing, what is the maximum percentage? Is that the 80% AMI? So this wouldn't be about the missing middle per se, which is more like the 80 to 120? This would be the 80% AMI, just for clarity?
That's correct. That's how it's defined in our land use code, 80% AMI and below.
Is it higher for ownership? Or is it still 80% for ownership?
I don't believe we've defined it that specifically. So it would be an opportunity to look at that through the economic analysis we're doing.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be great because I think it would be helpful to really understand when we're doing all these analyses, these different levels of affordability, because we know that it isn't just in the lowest bracket of income. And it would be helpful to understand whether some of these different alternatives actually help with that middle housing as well. And I don't know if that's something we have to specifically ask for because it would be above what we would consider affordable housing.
This would be 80% and lower?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we wanted to better understand the 80 to 120, we would have to specifically ask for that to be analyzed as well?
Affordable housing, rental, is, I think, defined in the land use code, 80% and lower. I don't think we defined it for homeownership models. So...
We have not.
Yeah. So that's...
So that's one thing to look at. So maybe I'm actually using the wrong terminology. I think really maybe what I'm talking about is workforce housing of that 80 to 120. And is that a range we could also look at in our analysis, if my colleagues are interested?
If that's something council directs, we could do that. We did look at that, at that range within our housing needs assessment.
Right.
It seems like it would be good to take a look at that if my colleagues are okay with it. We've talked about middle housing, missing middle housing quite a bit.
Mayor?
Thank you.
I'm thinking. Okay, Councilmember Stokes?
I thought you just said that the affordable housing in our, is 80% and lower.
For rental, yes.
For rental?
Yeah.
Okay. So what she's asking for is for both rental and?
Is for affordable and workforce, I believe.
Okay, so how would we get the whole spectrum then? Seems like we should be looking at the whole spectrum of housing that, affordable housing is broader than our kind of definition in a sense.
Yeah, so Councilmember Stokes, I am asking for both rental ownership as well as workforce housing, or the 80 to 120, whatever the right definition of that housing type is. Thank you.
And affordable, right?
And affordable, yes. Yes.
And that's the clarification we're looking for from the council, is just how broad do you want us to look in terms of that affordability and attainability range? So we can go up to 120 if that's what you want us to look at.
I mean, this is the real target we need to work on, but those others are crucial, too.
Yes, our greatest need is a 50% and below. But we also have the need, we have a need in just, in every category.
Councilmember Lee?
I agree. We need to, and we need to have the information, the facts. So people out there, the rest of the community, understand what we're talking about. It seems to be we don't really know for sure until we look at and talk about it. So thanks. I do have some problem with the incentive, with the, with the mandatory and incentive systems citywide. I have a problem with mandatory system. That's not the way I want to, you know, do things. Incentive systems is my preferred preference, which is why we're using now, MFTE, seems to be proven to be working. And we, and our housing program, if it's working properly, as we are talking about, you know, it should be adequate. Thank you.
This is just a study, too, just to remind you.
I know. But I don't, I don't agree philosophically. I don't want to study anything mandatory.
Okay. So can I ask, is there any cons to increasing the scope of this? Because, I mean, what we, what I really want to focus on is what's the hardest to get, which is 80% and below, or below 80% actually. But is there, are there cons to broadening the scope to also include 80 to 120?
It's going to be a slight increase in just the body of work. So it might take a little bit longer, more staff and consultant hours. But the overall methodology is generally in that umbrella. So it's not like a whole new effort. It's just expanding it a bit to look at that 80 to 120. And it would, it would show some of the trade-offs with, you know, amount of units in that 80 to 120 versus some of the ones that might be in the lower AMI levels as well, for comparison.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah, I'm comfortable moving forward with this. Like Councilmember Lee, I prefer more the incentive-based system than mandatory. But, you know, given this is just a study, we take a look at it. I'm also okay with if it's not going to cause any timeline issues if we move, expand the study to the 120%. I'm okay with that as well. I think the mayor is correct that we really need to hone in on the 80 and below. But if it's not a, if it's not a huge lift, I think it'd be great to have that data. Thank you.
Councilmember Braxdale?
I'm comfortable proceeding with, of course, including mandatory. And I'm fine including up to 120%. I guess I would just say, I'll leave it there. Never mind. Thank you.
What'd you say?
I didn't finish it. I just said I'm fine including up to 120%.
Yeah, I just honestly, I just don't want to muddy the waters of, that's not, to me, affordable housing. It's just, it's more affordable than expensive housing, but it's not what I consider affordable. So I kind of, I'm concerned that that's like taking us off our mission a little bit. Oh.
We need more housing, general.
Yeah. Okeydoke. Well, it looks like you have a consensus to move forward with the expanded scope of workforce and affordable, including rental and ownership.
Okay.
All right. Tree canopy.
This is one we, we felt we had some consensus from the council last time. You definitely want to study the tree canopy for the recommended alternative from the planning commission. And that could also be expanded to increase the amount of analysis that was done on those others to make sure it's comparable on the other alternatives.
So I spoke to this last week, and it wasn't, to me, foundational to the identity of Bellevue. It was foundational to the land use code work that we're going to do.
Yes.
And so that's how I would propose this.
And this will give us that, the ability to look at that. As you saw on the map this evening on the canopy areas, it wouldn't be site-specific, but it would be on those sub-areas of the city. We could look at it a little bit more specifically and where we might want to beef up some of the policies and maybe regulations in those areas.
Yeah. Okay. Any, so I'm good with that as written. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, on the FEIS analysis, a study impact on tree canopy, and what exactly are you going to find it? Were you just going to study and see what the tree canopy is? Or are you going to get more into what affects the tree canopy? And, you know, more, because we really don't have a good sense of what we're, what the tree canopy really is and what's going on and where we need to look and take some action. So what is, what's the total goal besides just getting a count of it and seeing where the impacts are?
Councilmember Stokes, I think at a basic level, it's going to be looking at what, what is the effect of the alternative on the tree canopy itself? Does it, does it decrease the tree canopy overall if we do this particular land use approach? And how would that compare to the other alternatives in terms of how that might affect the overall percentage of tree canopy? It, it could get into a little bit more detailed level. We haven't exactly scoped that yet. But it could also look at maybe the different types of trees that would be necessary. And that's kind of getting into, I think, more of what the mayor was talking about as we start to look at the land use aspect of that and how it informs the land use decision. So that may be going beyond what we can do in this particular analysis. We haven't, we haven't really figured all of that out yet. But at the very basic level, it's certainly going to look at, you know, how it affects the overall canopy for the city. And certainly what that means in terms of our greenhouse gas reduction goals.
Well, it's good because it actually gives us more information we don't seem to have.
Well, we have, we have good information on tree canopy right now. As Emile said earlier, we're going to have an update to that very soon. So we'll see what, so far we've been increasing our overall canopy, but maybe not performing as well as we like to in other parts of the city.
Sounds good.
Okay, Councilmember Lee?
I'm happy to see, hear Mayor said that, you know, she saw that tree canopy is foundational to affordable housing for the city, which I agree. So are we going to change the word foundational to the identity of Bellevue?
This is just an informational slide at this point in time?
Understand. But as I mentioned, words are important. They're confusing.
We'll talk about it in terms of the tree canopy relative to land use decisions in the city.
Absolutely. So that should be changed, not the identity of Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions if you're okay with it? Councilmember Zahn?
I just had a quick one. So when we say study impact, we're, the impacts are going to be different in different areas, right? Because when we look at our, our map here, the areas that have more tree canopy is in certain areas and not so much in others. So when we get done with the study impact, it will help us differentiate between these different areas and how the tree canopy is impacted by the, the different alternatives that we have. Is that right? So we'll be able to really hone in.
Absolutely. So it would be the three action alternatives, as well as the preferred alternative, and then also the impact of the additional density we'd be looking at as a result of 1337 and 1110. So it's all of those things overlaid and compared to each other.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Okay, I think I see consensus. Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Robertson?
Yeah, I support this. I think that tree canopy foundational to livability in Bellevue. So I don't have quibble with identity. But that isn't why I raised my hand. So I think that I support this. I would perhaps like to see come out of this because this is supposed to inform comp, comp, God, I can't even talk. It's getting so late.
I know.
Comp plan policies. It'd be great to see comp plan policies where we have a goal of a certain minimum canopy in every sub-area.
No, that's exactly right.
Right? Minimum of 30. We want 40% plus citywide. But I would like to see some of these areas have a lot more tree canopy. And so I'm hoping that the study will support the development of appropriate comp plan policies on how to support more trees, consistent trees. Because with Bell Brad at 14% and Bridle Trails at 51, that's a stark difference. I mean, I think that we should have a minimum of 30% everywhere, but, which would get us to the higher goals everywhere because some of the places are much higher. So, anyway, long way of saying I support it.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
So you're going to have to explain to us a little more carefully why these didn't make the list of us to study either that you didn't suggest it or that the planning commission didn't suggest it.
Sure. So in your desk packet and in the normal packet, we have the map, same one shown on the screen. You can see it a little bit better in your handout. And we have the 23 requests. So again, these came in during the 45-day comment period after the DEIS had come out. And they were asking for something beyond what was in the... And they were asking for something beyond what was in the, the DEIS. So that's why these twenty-three are highlighted. For some of them, they were analyzed at something different than it is today already, and they were asking for more. And what we have in this handout is the rationale for the preferred alternative ultimately not moving forward with what they were requesting. So it's kind of the, the staff take on each and every request. And what we would like to, to hear from council is if you have any questions about any of these and if there are any changes you want to make to the preferred alternative that would be consistent with these requests. Because right now, they are not in the preferred alternative nor were they analyzed based on this request in the draft DEIS.
So I'll start us off. I was, and then we'll go with Councilmember Rockdale. Okay. I was curious why number three didn't make the cut. Because being the Spring District, that's in, just in the middle of development, I can't imagine why we wouldn't consider them in this process. We have a commitment to the Spring District. We've invested a hundred million dollars into infrastructure there. It's curious to me.
Yeah, so for, for the Spring District, number three, so the, the current height limits out there are a hundred fifty feet in the Spring District. We have gotten development up to that a hundred fifty-foot level, especially for the office buildings. The preferred alternative does have two hundred fifty feet analyzed in it, so it is an increase of what it is today. The specific request to go all up to three hundred fifty feet, staff felt was a bit out of proportion when you look at that Bellred area as a complement to Wilberton and the downtown area. So that was the, the main rationale. So for each height category, there is an associated increase in development potential as well. So it's not just increasing height, it's also height and additional development capacity.
Okay, that's a great answer. Thank you. I mean, we're just studying, we're just looking at studying the impacts of granting that significant development, right?
And to be clear, we are looking at two hundred fifty feet right now. The, the Spring District did have a request to look at three hundred fifty feet, which we are, is not in the preferred alternative and has not been analyzed yet.
Right. But again, we're just looking as to whether we would want, want to analyze the further heights. Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
In the preferred alternative, is there any area of the city other than maybe RLL that isn't getting added density? Whether it be under the potential studied, isn't not getting, isn't being studied for additional density? Whether it be under increased zoning capacity or the two bills that the legislature passed?
I'll give one example, and then Tara can kind of fill in some others. There are some office zoned properties throughout the city that are largely remaining the same. And the rationale for those was not to just give more density and then face displacement of a lot of small uses in those areas. So that's one, one example of a, a zoning category that's not, not changing too much for most by the, by and large. Are there other examples, Tara?
I believe we didn't look at all because East Main was so recent. That was another.
Right. That just had a massive increase, yeah. So I'm kind of with Councilmembers on. If we start going through these, I mean, it's who gets to be decided. The planning commission went through these, the staff went through these. We are going to have a signi, if, if any of the alternatives, including alternative one, becomes law in the city of Bellevue in terms of the comp plan and the land use code to follow, we're going to have significant increased density. I'd like to kind of live with that for a while because we don't need to get whatever the, whatever that is. We don't even need to get more than zero to meet our growth targets. So to me, picking and choosing who we like on this list, for whatever reason, I think we could be here for three more weeks going through all of these. I think they've been vetted. I think that if down the road, if it becomes clear after we, the council has adopted a preferred alternative or adopted whatever the new comp plan's going to be, adopted the land use code, done the rezoning, if it turns out that some of these aren't feasible to redevelop in the way that we want or we're not seeing the development that meets our growth targets and meets the needs of our people, there is always comp plan amendments that can be done either by the property owner or initiated by the council. So I just would kind of like to keep moving forward with this. And if the council wants to look at this in five or ten years, well, we'll look at it again in ten years for the new comp plan. They can certainly make changes to that time and, or the applicants, the property owners can make applications. So I'm, I'm good with staff and planning commission's recommendation to not forward any of these at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so the, oh.
So the question, just because we're not putting in there doesn't mean these won't be looked at, right?
Yes, it means that.
At some time.
They will not be included in any of the analysis.
Correct. In this, for this update.
But they will be part of the blanket.
But you, but there are ways to have these go forward.
If the council wants them studied in the final DEIS, then that's the direction that we would need from you at this time.
But they could also do a development agreement.
That's what I mean.
They could, well, they could do, in some cases, they, it could be a development agreement depending on what they're looking for. Or they can always go through the annual amendment process at some point in the future as well.
That's all, yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Lee.
So to clarify, they can go through the regular development process anyway, right? Annual, annual requirement. Second, I think, we're talking about the Bellred corridor. We're going to do the Bellred look forward anyway, right?
That is part of this.
It's part of this now?
That's part of the comprehensive plan update, yes.
So all the properties along Bellred corridor, they need to be looked at?
They have been looked at.
They have?
Yes, and they're included in those alternatives that we looked at citywide. And as Emile said, most of them, I think majority of them, is that fair to say, had some type of, of an increase that, that was analyzed.
Okay, so that's a comprehensive look, and you are satisfied. They will have opportunity later, but not now? Okay? Thank you.
Okay. So I think there's a consensus to move forward with as proposed here.
Okay, thank you.
All right. What, did you?
I said yeah.
As in, you agree?
I agree.
Okay. I don't know if you're asking to say something. Okay, so the last one is other.
And this, we, we went over this earlier in our presentation tonight. So this was just the, the follow-up items that we reported back to you in the memo as attachments or as, as paragraphs describing what we were doing.
I appreciated you laying out the values. If we can say that again, it's housing, both market rate and affordable, sustainability, equity, and diversity.
Yes.
So any, any, anybody have, nobody? Okay, oh. Well, Councilmember Lee has his hand up. Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
I'm glad you included traffic analysis and other impact and mitigations. One thing that I, we, we haven't looked at is other infrastructures. I don't know about other services necessary, you know, like water, sewer, utilities, whatnot, you know? So there are other considerations.
And those are all analyzed in the, in the environmental impact statement.
Okay, it's all included. Thank you.
Right. But I think I would word it as directed as opposed to that. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to confirm council direction for the preferred alternative to be studied in the.
Well, I don't think it's necessary, necessarily the preferred alternative for all of them, is it?
As amended by council.
Yeah.
Okay, as amended by council, to be studied in the FEIS based on July seventeenth and July twenty-fourth discussion.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? I'm hoping our direction was clear enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, good job. Okay. Okay. On to study session, I mean, the study, session item number two.
So mayor and council members, this next item is a discussion of updates to the city council rules and amendments to the Bellevue City Code for Advisory Boards and Commissions. And just by background, staff is proposing recommended changes to the council's rules, procedure for conduct at this meeting as well, similar changes to the code provisions, governing boards and commission meetings. And tonight, staff is seeking the direction of the council in terms of amendments to the code. So I will mention by way of background that this was a topic of conversation at the council retreat.
Okay. Having trouble hearing, sorry.
With that, with, I'm sorry. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kathy Gerla, our city attorney, as well as Charmaine Aradondo, our assistant director at City Clerk's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, council. As Mr. Miyaki indicated, we're here tonight.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask that we have, I'm actually having trouble hearing. Go ahead.
Let's see if I can get this a little closer. We're here tonight to present a proposal to you for your consideration on changes to your rules and changes to the code concerning the council's meeting procedures and the board and commission meeting procedures. And we're going to focus tonight on two main areas, the remote participation and public participation. And as Mr. Miyaki indicated, some background to refresh your memory and how, how we got here is that you had a retreat back in March of this year and discussed some ideas about some amendments that could potentially be made to improve your rules on remote participation for yourselves. And a little over a year ago, you made some changes to the code for remote participation for board and commission members. And at that time, asked to revisit those rules in a year to see if there were opportunities for any changes. And so it's both of those efforts that are the outgrowth of those that are what we're bringing to you tonight for remote participation. On public participation, those rules have not been reconsidered or reviewed for quite some time. It was over eight years ago, the last time those rules were reviewed. So council members asked us to look at them and come back with any recommendations we may make or that we may make to change those public participation rules. So that's why, we do have recommendations, and that's why we're here tonight. And I'll turn it over to Charmaine.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Gerla. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. Different perspective from this table. Tonight, as Ms. Gerla mentioned, we are seeking direction to bring back amendments to the city council rules and also the code provisions for the boards and commissions. So given the hour, we'll go through this as quickly as possible. Again, talking about remote participation, public participation, and then a minor change to the order of your meeting on your regular agendas. So kicking it off with, sorry, remote participation. So currently, the council has a rule in place that requires council members to be approved for remote participation. And this happens either at a prior meeting or happens before joining the meeting you're wishing to join remotely. Typically, if it's the prior meeting, we handle it under council business. It's a motion and a vote by a majority of the council. So the current process, or the process that we are proposing is just a notification. So we're moving from an approval process to a notification process. It would just be giving notice to the city clerk, myself, by noon on the day of the meeting of your intent to participate remotely. In addition, we are adding a provision that the presiding officer must be in person at the meeting, and this follows council practice. We've done that where the mayor has been remote and has turned the chair, the presiding officer chair to the deputy mayor. There will be also a process in the rules for selecting a temporary presiding officer. As I said, if the mayor is gone or participating remotely, it automatically goes to the deputy mayor. If both are gone, either absent or participating remotely, then there's a process in the rules for selecting a temporary chair, which has to be a majority vote by, by the council. In addition, there was some interest in the council to not include approved City of Bellevue business travel as a part of the remote participation count annually. So currently, the council has a rule of four meetings per year that are allowed to be remote participation. If you're away on City of Bellevue business, that would not count towards your four annual limit. And then we did include a provision about camera expectations. Simply that the council, while participating remotely, is encouraged to leave your camera on as much as possible. There's also a little piece in there about notifying the clerk if you do turn your camera off and leave the room that you're in, just letting me know so that we can maintain quorum, for quorum purposes. Moving to the boards and commissions for remote participation, similar change, although the notice, since it is a notification process, also the notice is to the chair and the staff liaison for the board and commission. And the notice is the day prior to the meeting. And mostly the difference there, or the reason for the difference is it's a little bit, they have a little bit more of a challenging role in setting up their meetings and making sure that they have no more than three board or commission members participating remotely. If for some reason there were more than three that were requesting to be remote, it would be, it would defer to the staff liaison to make a decision on which three would get to remote, or participate remotely. And then moving on to a little bit of the public participation piece, there, the proposed changes to oral communications specifically are that individuals must sign up for themselves. We've had instances in the past where individuals come and they sign up, or they sign up electronically for multiple people, maybe friends or neighbors or other businesses. This just makes it clear that individuals must sign up for themselves. There would be an exception to someone who is being registered by a parent or guardian. And then obviously, anyone who may require assistance from us to be registered. And currently, the council rules allow for prioritization of speakers if and only if the amount of speakers exceeds thirty minutes. We are proposing putting in a provision that automatically prioritizes those speaking to items on that evening's agenda. And then the presiding officer can also give preference to those who have not spoken to council within the last thirty days or are speaking on items anticipated to come to council within the next thirty days. If we get to that, similar to tonight, last week, if we get to that point where there are more than thirty minutes of oral communications, the council has some options that we've written into the rules. So the council can either extend oral communications, you can add a second oral communications comment period at the end of the meeting, or you can reduce the amount of individual time given to commenters from three minutes to two minutes. Each of those options would require a majority vote by the council. And then finally, just a simple provision that topics of oral communications must relate to the City of Bellevue government. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gerla.
Thank you. So now we're turning to the rules of decorum for the council. And those are essentially, as you know, the rules that lay out your expectations for how the public will participate appropriately in your meetings. They're intended to allow the public to give input to you, but allow you to still efficiently and effectively run your meetings and do the business of the city. So we are proposing to add a general prohibition that, for conduct that disrupts or the orderly conduct of council meeting. Right now, in the rules, there's an expectation and a strong encouragement, I should say, in the rules, but we're suggesting we turn that into an enforceable prohibition on any conduct that disrupts the council meetings, which is similar to what other jurisdictions have included. We're also proposing in the rules some specific examples of the types of activities and conduct that would, could constitute a disruption sufficient to be enforceable. This isn't intended to be an exhaustive list, but it does include some of the more commonly identified or commonly encountered, I guess is the better word, types of behavior. Of particular note, I'll, I'll note that we've added a limitation on approaching council members or city staff, where we're recommending that during council meetings because both council members and staff need to pay attention during the meeting, and it can be very disruptive to have members of the public approaching them without the presiding officer's permission while the meeting's in, in process. And we've also added something with respect to the use of signs that isn't there now. So signs could not be fixed to the walls or any sort of structures, and they could not be signs that would obstruct other people's view or used in a way that might harm people. So if you bring a sign in and it has a long stick on it, you can't put the stick out in the aisle such that people can trip over it, those kind of things. So those are the specific examples. Again, not an exhaustive list, but intended to provide some guidance for the presiding officers. officers. There's a separate category of conduct that we also are recommending to be added to the rules, and this is conduct that's not protected by the First Amendment, but activities that could occur. And the U.S. Supreme Court defines the exceptions from the First Amendment, so it's the U.S. Supreme Court that defines the nuances of these. And they, there are some nuances. The Supreme Court just issued a decision in the end of last month, for example, about true threats and what needs to be proved in terms of recklessness. So I am not intending tonight, or in the rules, to go into all those nuances of each of these. I have attempted to draft the language in the rules so that it is consistent with the U.S. Supreme Court jurisprudence. And in general, these are, prohibit people from threatening, essentially threatening people with violence, use of obscene language or gestures, which is not what sometimes people may think. It's not gestures or language that is offensive in general. It is very specifically, it's sexually explicit language or gestures, and assault or attempted assault. So these may also be crimes, and, but regardless of whether the police department chooses to proceed forward with somebody if these are crimes, we believe that it, we're recommending that you should also put these in your rules so that you have a tool to remove somebody from a meeting if necessary, regardless of whether the police pursues these as a crime. So those are the types of conduct that are, we're recommending be added to be prohibited. And then that conduct can, when it actually interferes with your ability to carry out your meeting, result in enforcement. And so with respect to enforcement, we are recommending, now there is language, there is some language in the current rules on enforcement, we're recommending to make those options a bit more explicit. So we would have specific language in the rules that talks about the ability of the presiding officer to terminate comment period. So for example, if someone starts talking about their campaign or a ballot measure in the middle of their public comment period, the presiding officer can shut them off and ask the clerk to mute their microphone, can direct security personnel to assist them to their seat, order them to leave the room, have them removed if they refuse. And then the last one is prospective exclusion, if you will, from future meetings. And that is one where there's already that tool for excluding people from future public comment periods. We are, have proposed language that would also allow you to exclude people from attendance at meetings for repeated disruptions. And what I will say is this is an extraordinary remedy. It should be used very rarely and sparingly, but it is there. And we've added some time limits to it, so that it would be up to 60, no more than 60 days. It doesn't have to be 60, but no more than 60 at any one time for repeated disruptions or violations. We've clarified the process a bit more to be consistent with what some other jurisdictions have done in terms of, it's a written notice, has to have specific, you know, information in it. It gets filed with the clerk, and the clerk provides the person who's being excluded from prospectively, from future comment or future meetings with the notice of it. And then because of the significance of this, of enforcement and the legal issues and the First Amendment and other legal issues surrounding it, we're recommending some additional internal review procedures that don't currently exist in your rules for reviewing decisions of the presiding officer to exclude someone. So the rules have language in it that allows the council to overrule a presiding officer's decision to exclude someone. So if it's from a particular meeting, they can, a majority vote of the council members at that meeting can vote to overrule. If it is a prospective exclusion, then the council members, the majority of council members at the next meeting after that exclusion is filed and served on the party can vote to overturn it. And then finally, there's also a provision that we're proposing to add that allows an appeal by a person who has been issued a prospective exclusion from future meetings, can appeal that to the council. And again, that is similar to what other jurisdictions have done. Turning to the boards and commissions, again, these will be code changes that we're recommending, and there are two sets of changes. The first is changes to the scope of public comment. So what we're recommending is similar to what Charmaine mentioned for the council. If someone wants to come and speak in front of the, any of the advisory boards or commissions, the topics have to relate to the City of Bellevue government. But in addition, we're suggesting that the topics be limited to subject matters that are within the powers and duties of the board or commission. So each, as you know, each of these boards or commissions are advisory to you. They're established for the purpose of looking at very specific subjects. And so the intent here would be that they're volunteers and their time is valuable. So if it's the Transportation Commission, for example, this would limit somebody from coming and talking about police issues, or art issues, or things that aren't relevant to the Transportation Commission's business. And then lastly, this is different than what we're proposing for the council rules, but it would allow the boards and commissions the option, if they chose to take it, to put into their bylaws a limit that people have to speak on topics that are on their agenda. As to the rules of decorum, the boards and commissions we're proposing would have, and the enforcement mechanisms, would have the same rules in the code as the council has. There's, given, again, the significance of these issues, a, it is recommended that there be some consistency throughout the city on these, so that the boards and commissions, for the most part, have the same rules and the same enforcement procedures as the council does, and all the boards have the same. So that's why we're putting, recommending that we put it into the code. There's a couple of exceptions to it being consistent with the council rules. One is that if a presiding officer of a board or commission issues a prospective exclusion from either public comment or attendance at future meetings, that that can not only be, that decision can not only be overruled by the board and commission members, just like the council can do here, but it could also be overruled by the city council. So again, if you, there's a need for some heightened review of this, given the significance of the legal issues. So if there's a presiding officer that issues a problematic or unwise decision, this at least affords the council the ability to step in and decide to overturn it if they choose to do so. And then finally, the appeal process for an exclusion from future public comment or future attendance at meetings would be heard by the council rather than the boards and commissions. Again, given the significance of these issues, the need for some consistency, and also the need for timeliness. So some of these boards only meet every month, and so if you issue someone an exclusion for a month, they're not going to get their appeal period until that exclusion is over. So for those reasons, we're recommending that any appeal of an exclusion be heard by the council.
Okay. And moving to what should be the easiest part of this, we are recommending that on all of your standing agendas for your regular meetings, that we add a category for written reports. So you'll, you know that you're seeing a lot of city manager reports that are written only, just information provided in the packet, your intergovernmental affairs monthly packet, quarterly updates on some council adopted plans. The information that comes as written only falls under different categories. This written reports category would just be where those would all be housed, and it would be as item 13 on your, on your regular agenda. But the order of business is written into your rules, so it is a rule change. And with that, just a reminder that we are here to answer any questions that you have. And again, we're seeking direction to bring back the council rules change via resolution, and then the code provision change for the boards and commissions.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to start?
Sure. Happy to, mayor. I think this is great work. I think you've captured some of our work at the, at the retreat, so I'm very much in favor of moving this forward. My only real comment, well, on slide 10, I would remove "true." I mean, "true" seems somewhat subjective, what's a "true threat," or else maybe we should say what a "true assault," or "true obscene gesture," et cetera, et cetera. So I think a threat of violence is a threat of violence, so I'm not sure we need to have the word "true" in there. But other than that, I think this looks, looks great, and happy to move it forward.
If I could just respond for a minute. A "true threat" is exactly what the Supreme Court calls it, and "true" means, it does have legal meaning. It means it's not in jest, it's not, so the Supreme Court has defined these as "true threat."
As "true." Okay. Thank you.
So I'm going to say that I have two recommendations for change. One is on slide 12. I would prefer not to limit comments to agenda items of our boards and commissions, because it just concerns me that somebody may have gotten a babysitter, may have found, find a way to get here to talk about something important to them, and they get turned away because it's not on the agenda. So that would be my recommendation. And then on slide five, I would prefer it to read, "In anticipation of the absence or remote attendance, the mayor can appoint, of the mayor and deputy mayor, the mayor can appoint a presiding officer in advance." I think that if the day of the meeting comes and we haven't had that opportunity in advance to make, appoint the presiding officer, then we should do as it's written and be a vote of the council. But it's, we have warning that the deputy mayor and the mayor are going to be absent in the following meeting. I think the mayor should be able to appoint who the presiding officer will be in advance. So those are my two recommendations. Happy to take any comments. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I have a question regarding the absence of both mayor and deputy mayor. It says here, "City council shall appoint one of the members of the council." The challenge is that, you know, like mayor suggested, perhaps mayor could appoint somebody. But something maybe happened last minute, or inadvertently, the mayor cannot appoint someone. We still need to figure out, you know, who's going to be acting. It's just a acting person, both, conducting the meeting. So I think that it doesn't require the action of a council to meet. I think, is there something new, or has there been doing that before? What have we been doing in the past in the event that mayor and deputy mayor is absent? What, it has never happened. I don't believe in my 30 years on the council. So what, what do we, what do we do?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. It did happen one time recently where Councilmember Stokes actually was the temporary presiding chair for a meeting. It's because Mayor Robinson was participating remotely, and Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House was absent that meeting, so that's.
In that event, what happened?
Councilmember Stokes.
I know. What was the process?
Councilmember Stokes was.
The mayor was appointed.
Yeah.
The mayor appointed? Oh, okay. So it was anticipated.
Yes.
Yeah. So it happened once. So what happened if the mayor could not appoint? I think that should be a pretty, something we can talk about. Otherwise, I think we need to have some kind of process.
I think they're proposing that, that it be a vote of the council.
Yeah, but that sounds to be onerous in what they're going to do for.
What's your recommendation?
Well, I think recommendation should be very simple, easy, forward. I mean, I don't know, maybe somebody can make some suggestions. I've lost ideas, but let's see if somebody else.
Okay.
I have one.
Councilmember Zion.
Oh, I had other things I wanted to bring up.
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a couple things. I like the information that's in here. Want to lift up especially the fact that people that give testimony, we've removed the requirement that they give their address, because I find that them having to publish their address out loud is, just doesn't seem like it's needed. I am concerned about the, may choose to include a requirement to speak only on agenda items, because I could see where the public might come, and they don't completely understand when it might show up in the agenda. And so the idea that they are going to be not allowed to speak, I'm just concerned about it. I know that some boards and commissions do have a look-ahead calendar, so maybe people can deduce from that when a topic's going to come. But we, as a council, do not publish, I don't believe, a look-ahead calendar, so I don't understand how the public would actually be able to anticipate that, and items coming in the next 30 days, to be able to know that if they show up at this time. So I think we might want to tweak that a little bit. I like the option of being able to extend or reduce to two minutes if a lot of people come and want the ability to speak. So I like that. I did have a question on the disruption piece, because it had hand clapping in there, and, you know, I, tonight, we had hand clapping. So I don't think we intended to mean that, I guess I just want to make sure that if we have something in here that says, "This is considered a disruption," that's not okay. It says, "Whistling, hand clapping, stomping feet, shouting, and other outbursts." But we know that there are times where people are clapping, and that's okay. So I, I would like to get some ideas of how we actually look at that particular item on here, so we don't end up with a rule that we don't, we're not going to enforce.
So a couple of thoughts on that. Councilmembers on. One is that with, with all of these, there is discretion, the presiding officer has discretion to decide whether to enforce or whether to give a warning or not. And certainly, before excluding someone, it has to be an actual disruption of the meeting. So that's true with all of these. So there is some discretion there. So if someone stands up, for example, and is, you know, blocking somebody's view, the presiding officer, again, depending on, you know, how long it happened and all of that, could decide, as another example, to not enforce.
This is just codifying what we've always done.
Okay. So I'm fine with that one. And then the one about the anticipating being on the agenda in the next 30 days, I do think that one, I would like us to just think about that, because unless we're going to publish a look-ahead agenda, I don't understand how the public would actually know when they fit into that.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmembers on. The council currently has a rule in place, so the current practice or current rule of the council says prioritization can be given to those who have not spoken to the council in the last quarter, which is, quarter isn't defined, or who are speaking on items anticipated to come to council within the next quarter. So we mirrored that same language, just reduced it to a timeframe that everyone understands with 30 days, because with the quarter, is that a rolling quarter? Is that, you know, Q1 versus Q2? We do not publish for the public a look-ahead calendar. That's more for prioritization, so we can pick out the topics, like when I bring the topics to the mayor, and we determine which ones will come to the council in the future. I will say that's probably not a frequently used category for prioritization.
Okay. Well, I think that since it's written in here like that, I just want to make sure we don't put something out there that the, the public actually wouldn't have enough information to even know whether they fit in there or not. So either we have a way to have that clarity, or maybe this actually shouldn't be written in quite this way.
Hmm. I've appreciated it being in there. When we've had overflowing audience, I think it's, I think it's worked.
So, and I'm okay with the person having spoken, spoke, spoken in 30 days. I think it was the other one, which is items anticipating to come to the agenda.
And again, the prioritization is more for staff internally, and we know, and the council knows, generally, the topics that will come within the next 30 days or the next four meetings was not necessarily thinking of it as something that the public would know which topics are coming, so they know what to sign up for.
We've got 15 minutes left here in this meeting.
I'm just concerned if somebody actually was to come to City Hall and then realize, oops, I, I didn't fit the criteria.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I think these are good overall. Question on what you just talked about, why are we going from 30 days, from three months to 30 days? The quarter's three months. Quarter in the calendar.
The, that's something that the city attorney and I were discussing. Like I said, the quarter was not defined, so it was very difficult for us as staff to look at, was it a rolling quarter, or was it just Q1? When we're looking at someone who hasn't spoken to council in the last quarter. When we're looking at someone who hasn't spoken to council in the last quarter, and knowing what meetings to look at.
My point was, we're going from three months to one month.
Mm-huh.
I mean, you could say 90 days.
Yeah, we can do, we can do whatever the council would like.
I mean, it does just seem like that's, 30 days is not a lot. I mean, we're jumping from that, that's my point. When we do 45 days, or 60, or whatever, but going from 30, from...
What would you recommend?
I'd say 60 days.
All right, 60 days it is.
Two months, 60 days.
All right. Councilmember Braxton.
So for the temporary presiding officer, I guess I would say, I think there are a couple of thoughts here. One is if we specify maybe a couple of positions that are by default appointed in the rules. So for example, the next up would be the most previous mayor, most recent mayor, and then after that would be the most recent deputy mayor, and then after that, either the most senior member on council or a council vote. But I think having some predictability in the rules versus just being an appointment upfront.
Yeah. That totally makes sense to me.
The, the second point is, speaking only on agenda items, I think whatever we do, we should either be consistent across council and boards and commissions, or be more lenient in council than on boards and commissions. I don't know that, given the motivation for this rule, I don't know that I think it's fair to have, boards and commissions have to deal with what we're trying to manage and not counsel, if that makes sense. So if we're trying to, for example, if we're trying to avoid having someone sort of rant on about something that doesn't have to do with the meeting, I think we should take that on more than the, than the boards or commissions.
So for the council meetings, you do not have to speak to the agenda?
Right.
And we're suggesting that the boards and commissions don't have to either.
Got it.
I mean, wouldn't have to either.
Got it, got it. Okay, so I thought in this, we were saying that you had to speak on an agenda night. Maybe I misread.
Yeah.
Okay. All good. And then does, not engaging with council members during breaks during a meeting, sorry, not engaging with council members during, or staff during a meeting, does that include breaks?
No, it's not intended to.
Okay. It's just active meeting time. Okay. That's it, thank you.
So we have, oh, go ahead, David. Oh, okay. So we have the 60 days instead of the 30 days. We have, do not limit comments to agenda items for the boards and commissions as well. We already have that true for the council. We have, in anticipation of the absence or remote attendance, the mayor can appoint a presiding officer in advance, but if there is no advance notice, the presiding officer would be the individual most recently mayor, and if that person's not available, the person most recently deputy mayor.
May I ask a clarifying question?
And if not that, then the most senior member on the council, in terms of having been on the council longest, which may be the one and the same. Okay, go ahead.
So this, this part of the, of your rules that we're touching today has to do with whether one person's going to be remote, and one person absent, or both people remote. There's a separate section of your rules on both people being absent. Would you like us to make those consistent?
Yes.
Okay.
I think those are the only changes that I heard. So is there a motion to approve as amended?
Legislation for action approved as amended at a future meeting to amend the council rules and the city code related to boards and commissions.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.